All right, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. Laura, would you please call the role?
Garcia.
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers. Okay, maybe that's a visual? Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran. Lisa, can you hear us? Okay, there might be an issue there. Ziz. Ziz. Okay, and she's waving not talking, so that's a problem. Oh, we got it here, great. Lisa, can you hear us?
I can't hear anything.
Donna, can you hear us?
Donna, I can hear you.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't hear anything else.
Okay, now, I just heard that, but I didn't hear anything before Rob said something.
My computer keeps flashing that my internet is unstable, but hopefully it gets stable here.
Okay.
I can't hear anyone that's in the boardroom. Me too.
I'll walk over and figure out what's going on.
Okay, we're going to do a sound check in just a bit. Okay, everyone, thanks for your patience. If you can hear me, may be relevant. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Thank you for all of those who are joining us this evening, and we're happy that you're here. We had, did send out a text today that we're going to be giving an update on coronavirus. This wasn't called out originally in our agenda, so we, just being as transparent as we can, just wanted to make sure that people were aware. Obviously, we've had some sort of update on coronavirus since March 12th of last year when we closed down schools, so that's not atypical. So, that being said, we're going to start with the superintendent's report, which is, and which will also be where this conversation is. Rob?
Thank you, Board President, Marquess, board members. In the interest of time, we're going to head right into the COVID-19 update, if that is okay with the board. We do have several of our members from our, our health partners that do have another, another meeting at seven o'clock, so we want to be mindful of that time. So, at this point, we will, Randy, or communications team, if you could pull up the, the deck, and then we will begin by turning it over to Heather and, and Dr. Urbina, once we pull that up. Heather, if it's okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn the presentation over to you, and, and thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Anderson. Yes, that's totally fine. Let me get this pulled up here. Okay. So, I'm gonna go ahead and update folks on where things stand currently in Boulder County, updated as of 2:00 PM yesterday. This graph is from the state dial, actually, today, so it's more up to date. Right now, currently in Boulder County, our two-week cumulative incidence is up at 458.8, which puts that metric into stay-at-home level, or level red. Our two-week average positivity rate in Boulder County is at 7.1%, putting us in the yellow. And as far as declining our stable hospitalizations in Boulder County, we are still in level green on that piece. This is a look at how things are looking across the Denver metro regi- region. As you all know, we're seeing a massive increase in cases across the state. Boulder County is this little red line here, and Broomfield County is this lighter, tealish color. As you can see, though, we're, we are seeing a climb across all of our Denver metro region areas. This slide should look pretty familiar to folks. This is our number of Boulder County residents and CU-affiliated residents newly reported as testing positive. This is from late August through yesterday. These are folks who are positive or considered probable. The lighter blue is CU-affiliated cases. You'll see our earlier September surge there, and now we're seeing our more widespread community cases. Most recently, about 15% of our cases are CU-affiliated, but really, we're seeing those in the broader community at this point in time. This is our trend in two-week incidence of new COVID-19 cases by age group. As you can see toward the right-hand side of the slide, this is zoomed in so that you can see what's happening a little bit closer up, and this is rate per 100,000. All of our age categories are seeing an increase. Right now, the, the steepest increases, as far as more than doubling, are happening in our 0 to 9 age range, our 75-plus age range, and our 18 to 22, so those are the highest right now. This is a slide that talks through what we're seeing as far as cases in the 0 to 4, 5 to 9, 10 to 14, and 15 to 17 age range, which is most of our school age population. So, you can see what's happened in the last two weeks as of 11/8, and what's happened in the previous. We've seen increases in number of cases among all our school-aged age groups, comparing, when we compare the most recent two weeks to the previous two weeks. In particular, we've seen over a tripling among our 0 to 4-year-olds, 5 to 9-year-olds. So, that's definitely something that we're watching. This is taking a look at the cases that are reported either positive or probable, probable by municipality, and so you'll see in the most recent data that it's a fairly close, even split between Boulder City and Longmont. We have 376 cases in Boulder City and 340 in Longmont, with, in the past seven days, about 41% of our new cases have resided in the city of Boulder, and 36 have been, 36% have been in Longmont, so still make up the larger majority of our cases. This piece right here is really alarming for us, and is also a trend that we're seeing beyond Boulder County, is our hospitalization rates. You can see, well, you maybe can't see, the first date there is April, where it's starting at the graph through today. As of right now, we have 86 people currently hospitalized in Boulder County for confirmed COVID-19. That's the highest number of hospitalizations we've had throughout this pandemic, so it's definitely something that is a concern again for us and for the state. So, those are the main pieces of data that I wanted to share this evening. We see that things are not trending in the direction that we would like to see them in public health. I think Helene is gonna share a bit more about Broomfield specifically, and then I think we, we'd like to share just some of the pieces that we need our community to start engaging in more of, or continue engaging in, to slow down the spread. Helene, I don't know if you're ready to present.
Yep. Can I, this is Helene Lammer, can you guys hear me? Okay. I'm Helene from Broomfield Public Health. Thanks for having us this evening. Similar to Heather, as she shared, we, we are seeing some alarming numbers, and so I will share my screen in just a second, so hopefully. So, as, as we've talked about, we've all shifted to Level Orange, which has been called Level 3 before, and you can find these updates that I'll be going over on our website. This link is an active link here at broomfieldcovid19.org. So, we are also seeing that ongoing alarming trend of our average cases, and looking at a three-day or a seven-day moving average, it really just gives a perspective of how much of an increase we've seen in this last month, month and a half, and it's been a constant uptick where we haven't, in the past where we've been able to associate it maybe with an associated outbreak or a particular age group. It's definitely staying at these higher levels of cases, case incidence incidents. Our, this next slide here just showing in terms of when we think about the levels of the dial that the state is using, our numbers are actually in the red level, which is Level 4, and so that's part of why all the health departments are working really carefully with all our community partners and school partners to really get out the message of, of staying at home, limiting contact, because this, this case of incident has just continued to creep up over the last several weeks and through the month of October, and now into November. Our positivity rate has also gone up to, if you, if you look at when we started having much more access to testing throughout the whole community, so that's where we're using the June-through-current-day perspective, when we're doing lots more testing than we were previously able to do in the beginning of the COVID-19 in the spring, you can see that our positivity rate are, just checked, actually, right, right now it's up again, so every day it's gone up, and then so 8.2 is our positivity rate for Broomfield County, which is in the level yellow in terms of the level, but it's an alarming number when we see it go over 5% that we really know that that's a struggle in terms of it. There's much more community-wide transmission happening. We look at the different age groups and, and in terms of just kind of categorizing, you know, where we keep seeing an uptick, as I ever mentioned, we've, we've seen cases go up across the board, but this is just, you know, it's flagging, the orange line is flagging the 5 to 17-year-olds in terms of just awareness of, of that uptick that we've seen in, in terms of when students have returned and, and what else may be going on in the community in terms of increased exposure. There's a lot of text on here, but these slides can definitely be shared with others to read at another time, but we, as we've shared, see an alarming increase in our COVID cases. Our case incidence has, has every day gone up in terms of 474. We're actually at 500 per 100,000 today, and as I just shared, I just updated our positivity rate to 8.2. We know that household transmission continues to be one of the biggest factors, and that's why it's so critical to make sure if someone's sick, to, you know, seek out testing and immediately start wearing a mask, things to isolate from their household members to try to reduce that household transmission. We are hearing a lot more of our case investigations sharing that they actually have a, a good sense of who actually might have exposed them, in terms of it might have been a family member or a friend that they can recall either was sick or found out that they were COVID-positive. There's a lot of that small gatherings, events, kind of small gatherings and household transmission that's happening. Our cases have also reported some work exposures, other events like birthdays and other, you know, multi-household activities together, as well as sports and, and club activities being potential exposures. I think it's always important to just highlight the symptoms, because I think some people don't always put, connect the dots together in terms of what they might start having as symptoms. The number-one thing that we heard from every single case in our last, you know, week or two of cases was a headache, and some people just started with a headache. And a lot, another, the second one we hear is fatigue, a lot, lot of comments about fatigue. So, it's not a fever, and, and we just constantly are trying to get out that message of that it's often mild symptoms, and sometimes there's GI components, it's sometimes diarrhea. More, more feedback this time around with cases sharing kind of fuzzy thinking or brain fog, just feeling kind of more confused, some more reports of dizziness, as well as a mix of cold-like symptoms, which can be runny nose, congestion. And we know, as we all are feeling that COVID fatigue, in terms of just, we all would love it to be back to normal. We don't want to have to worry about stay-at-home concerns and orders, and, and so that, that's reflected in our case interviews as well, and that people don't always want to do the interview, the full interview. They might not give the correct information or correct address, and we're also recently more running into individuals who are part of quarantine, that have been in part of multiple quarantines, so there's that fatigue, quarantine fatigue happening as well, too. Again, extra information in here I'll just highlight, but, you know, what do we know? What are we keeping an eye on? We, we are carefully monitoring how many more cases we do see in, in all school-age groups and childcare groups. We know that most of the research is, is showing that there's a lower transmission with younger kids, but that's something we're gonna continue to monitor and see how it goes. We know that schools have done an immense amount of work to keep students and staff safe, and there is an immense amount of value of having students have that access, but we also recognize how high the community transmission rate is right now in Colorado, and, and how we do also need to take some pretty strong actions to help reduce the spread. Other considerations, just to share, are just, you know, we recognize and, and work with our school partners on how is a disruption of schools and, and all the logistics of staffing and how, how to cover classes, how to make sure students and staff are properly screened, health screening. There is a significant impact on the local public health agencies. We work very closely with Boulder County Public Health and our other partners, and we are, we are also struggling with cases and contacting cases and investigations and, and businesses and different scenarios that are going on, and the importance of the spread, controlling the spread in the community. We, you know, I know our overall goal is always to try to keep schools open and keep students and staff safe, so we're, we're all collaborating together, and we're also trying to advocate for more access to testing to quickly help identify possibly asymptomatic, as well as, you know, early symptomatic individuals, to get them quickly isolated and, and help reduce the spread. These are just our links of our website, broomfield.org/covid, and lots of extra information on just reversing the trend and other information on our site. Thank you all, and we're happy to help answer questions.
At this point, I think that we're gonna have our staff just go through the rest of this presentation, if that's okay. Heather, Helene, and Dr. Urbina, and then I'm sure that our board will probably have questions once we've gone through this piece. So, I believe, I believe Stephanie Faren is going to be presenting next, if, if, if I am correct on that, Randy, is that right?
Yep. Thanks, Dr. Anderson. I'm here, if you can hear me.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. So, you know, really what I want to say mirrors exactly what Heather and Helene have said up to now. You know, throughout September and October, the number of cases that our COVID team investigated were rising, but, but minimally, and, you know, in a way that we were able to really keep on top of them. A lot of those cases also involved really tracking symptomatic students or staff that required a negative test before they could return, and in some instances resulted in a quarantine while we waited for those test results. However, the past two weeks, we have seen just a significant increase in the number of cases that our team is needing to investigate, and more and more times initiate quarantines. We are reviewing now upwards of 50 cases of day, a day. Not all of those result in quarantines, but many times those are cases that we need to continue to follow up on over a few days or get more information on. And as you know, yesterday, we had to quarantine over 400 people. Another difference that we're seeing really over the last couple of weeks, which again is highlighted by the information that Helene and Heather gave, is that the majority of the cases that we are seeing now in schools involve positive individuals and not just symptomatic folks that we're following. You know, in addition, as public health acknowledged, they're really beginning to reach their capacity to follow up with the cases that they're receiving in a timely manner, and that situation cascades down into our schools. People that might have typically been notified that they were a contact and that they should be quarantining are not getting that information in as quick of a manner as they did, especially when we have folks who aren't cooperating sometimes. And then that prevents them from actually knowing they shouldn't come to school or to work, and then sometimes when they come and they don't realize that they've been exposed, then they get sick and trigger quarantine for us. So, that's some of the community impact that we've been seeing. Another impact that is really going to begin to cause more and more quarantines for us is the more restrictive return-to-school requirements that accompany our move to the Level Orange. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. And so, under Level Yellow, which was Safer at Home Level 2, if a critical, if somebody had a major symptom or a minor symptom that did not resolve within the timeframe, all they needed to return was a negative COVID test. Under Safer at Home Level Orange, because of the recognition that, you know, there is more transmission in the community, there is an increased restriction that is put in place, and that is needing a negative COVID test and an alternative diagnosis. So, those things need to come together before we can release somebody back into school, or before we, you know, can stop, stop a quarantine for happening. Those two things really will significantly impact us, and those really rent into effect on Monday, so we haven't even seen the full, you know, outcome of what that new restriction would be. I do want to take just a moment at this point, if I can, to recognize all of the staff, the nurses and the health room staff throughout the district. They have been working literally nonstop to keep track of students in schools, to follow up and gather information, and they often are the ones who have to tell families that they can't bring their kiddos back to school without a test, and now without an alternative diagnosis. That takes time and, and money for our families, and oftentimes they have to deliver that unfortunate information. And then I also want to acknowledge the staff at Boulder and Broomfield Counties. Their public health staff has been incredibly supportive and professional, and has been an amazing support to us. This is an, an event unlike anything we've ever experienced, and I think we really need to make sure that we give our unending appreciation to those folks who have been keeping our community and, and really helping to keep our schools open and safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. So, board members, as we think about the current challenges that you've heard from our health officials and as well as our staff, the skyrocketing cases that we're seeing, which has doubled and tripled the rates over the past two weeks, and those rates continue to climb, not just here in Boulder County, but those areas surrounding us, is, is, is resulting in stretched and potentially inconsistent contact tracing and case investigation, right? So, as we were thinking about how we were operating previously prior to heading into Safer at Home Orange, we were able to keep up and, and keep track of those things and have a better quality control in regards to those that we know had been exposed to proactively quarantine to keep case rates down. As, as local health systems become overwhelmed, and it's because as our team becomes overwhelmed, we aren't able to consistently guarantee that level of contact tracing that was a big proponent of our, one of our biggest mitigation strategies that we've been using. The, the Safer at Home Orange quarantining criteria is resulting in the inability for us to continue to try to close on a school-by-school basis. As, as Stephanie is sharing with you, 50 to 70 cases a day we're trying to track down and figure out, you know, again, if somebody has symptoms, if a student or staff member has symptoms, right, they not only have to get a negative test, but they also have to get an alternative diagnosis from a doctor, right? And, and what we're hearing throughout our community is those, those appointments are becoming harder and harder to be able to achieve, as we think about how all of this is starting to begin to really compound. And then, as we think about the situation that we have, and the interdependency as a community that all of our school districts have here in the Denver metro, it compounds the issues in regards to staffing. Several of our large districts where lots of our employees live, that, those districts have decided to go remote. It creates childcare issues, which is going to create teachers having to, to, as teachers and staff, having to make accommodations for that, potentially having to take leave to take care of those things, and with our razor-thin margins around staffing, that certainly impacts us as well. So, next slide. So, board members, I, I need to let you know, and I need to let our community know, that I do not make these recommendations lightly. This is quite frankly agonizing, as we think about the things, the, what we, what we provide for our kids and the importance of in-person learning. We feel that we're at a place now that we are just, just overwhelmed, and that we need to, to, to take action and take action quickly. So, we are recommending that all students in grades pre-K through 12 start on home learning starting next Tuesday, November 17th, that we will try to bring kids back when we come back from winter break. This is a similar pattern that you're seeing many other districts who are facing these challenges take as well. You know, if, if the trends and patterns hold true to what we've seen with this virus, as these cases grow, as we hit a holiday or as we hit a break, that, that tends to compound the cases that we're dealing with, and we've seen that over Labor Day, we're starting to see that over Halloween. We don't have any information that would lead us to believe that that's not going to happen over Thanksgiving, and that we will look to the best of our ability to return students with intensive needs and, and review case rates after Thanksgiving to determine if it's safe to begin to bring back those limited groups. We know that our students with intensive needs need to learn in person, we understand that, but we also want to be sensitive to the case rates in our community, that if the trend holds and continues, that will continue to grow exponentially, as we've seen over the past two weeks, and as we've seen all of the other districts that have gone, or, or counties that have gone into Safer at Home Orange. To my knowledge, there isn't a county that's been able to mitigate that to get out of Orange, right? And that, when you look at the seven-day case rates that, that Heather shared, they're just continuing to grow and grow and grow. Unlike when we had the spike in cases at CU earlier in the year, where they grew, there was mitigation strategies, and you started to see that come down, and I think that, you know, I, I just commend Boulder County Public Health for, for, and the CU, City of Boulder, working together to create those mitigating strategies. I do not see a similar path forward at this point for us with the challenge we're facing. So, those, this is what we're recommending at this point moving forward. Again, moving students, all students in, in grades pre-K through 12 to home learning, starting next Tuesday, staying in home learning until January 5th, and then, you know, continuing to monitor case rates, and then beginning to look at how we can bring back our students with intensive needs first, and starting to review those case rates after Thanksgiving, working with staff to determine if we'll be able to, to be able to, to create an, an environment where we mitigate the risks to be able to bring people back in. So, at this point, I would ask Dr. Urbina if he had any other comments or questions, and then we'd open the, open the floor up to the board members for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I just wanted to say that I, I think these are very important discussions. We're seeing a significant increase in our rates, and, and we're just talking, we shouldn't just be talking about numbers, we should be talking about people. This, this disease is severely affecting all populations, all age groups. When we talk about either hospitalizations or deaths in our communities, these are real people, and, and, and when you're hospitalized, that has a significant impact on you as well as your family. So, we're seeing increases in, in, in challenges, not only in illness, and as Helene alluded to earlier, the impact on the family and the impact on the individual that may extend longer than, than hospitalizations. And unfortunately, what we're seeing is now the community in this increase is impacting the schools, and I applaud your efforts for considering this, these proposals, because the, we've not been able to control the community spread, and we know that what happens in the community happens in the schools. And even though the rates of transmission are low in the school, lower in the schools, we still think that this is wise to think about this alternative, and I applaud you for thinking about it. we still think that this is wise to think about this alternative, and I applaud you for thinking about it. We're in this together, and I think if we can get the rates in our community to participate fully in control of wearing a face covering, of physical distancing, of avoiding social gatherings, washing your hands, and doing all the things that you've talked about so far, that we've been talking about for weeks and months, then I think we will be better off and hopefully have less impact on the schools. So, thank you for allowing us to be here with you, and I know each of our team would be open to your questions.
Is that it? All right. Well, obviously, it's really disappointing that we find ourselves in this place after all the work that we've put into making in-person learning happen. I'll just start with one question. One thing we did in March 12 is we did provide childcare for working families. Will there be any childcare options during this interim period before we go back to in-person learning?
I think that that's something we can review. Given where we are with the case rates and the massive quarantining, at this point, we don't have any plans to offer that childcare next week. I think that that's something that we can review in the conversations. And again, these things happen suddenly as we started to really start to see the impacts of this quarantining. We felt the need to act quickly. So, over the course of the next few weeks, I think that we can have conversations first to see if we can work through our school-age care program to set up care for our essential workers, right, similarly to as we did when we closed in March, and then potentially look at to see how we can expand that. But again, I would just reiterate that the rising cases in our community and the requirements around quarantining and isolating, if kids have symptoms and then can't prove that they have something else besides COVID, right, you're talking about massive shutdowns as well. So, I think that's a different change and something that we'll have to look at and consider.
All right. And then, I'm just gonna go down alphabetically, I think. Richard?
Well, I want to thank both the county departments of health and Rob and your team. And I know that you've taken a lot of effort in making the recommendation. Having said that, this is a recommended action, does that mean that we have to vote on it?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, great. Good for the clarification. So, I am a little bit concerned in terms of the question that Tina asked around childcare because that is going to present a big problem, particularly around some of the essential workers that we do have out in the community that need access to some form of childcare. And we're very much dependent on the K-5 opening and having a place for their kids to go. So, I'm hoping that you do come up with some answers to that. But unfortunately, you know, it is what it is, and we need to listen to our health departments and our teams. So, thanks for the information.
Kathy? I'll echo Richard's. Thank you to Boulder County Public Health and Broomfield County Health. I just have a couple of quick questions. What will meal service look like? Will it go back to delivering meals like we were before, a couple of days a week? Can you just talk about that real quickly?
I think that we do have meal distribution already set up in the sense of how this is going to impact that. I'm not sure if Rob Price has that information. Again, this all came together pretty quickly. Rob, do you have information on that, or do we need to be able to get back to the board and community on that?
No. Food distribution, Kathy, will continue just like we are now, so nothing will change there. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, maybe you could just say what it is, just in case some people who are listening aren't familiar with what it looks like.
Okay. So, right now, we have food distribution that occurs on Mondays. I believe it is from 10:30 to 1:30. The information can be found on our website. We have seven locations across the district that we set that up. Families can come, and it's free and no cost to the family. They can pick up a bag of food. Typically, there's 10 to 14 meals in those bags. And then, of course, with the students that are in school right now, of course, meals are free. That will, you know, once they go to remote learning, will just be dependent on the bag program.
Can I make a comment on the meal distribution? Just so you're aware, I think every person who has a child in the district gets a text on the meal distribution days. I do. So, just, I think the awareness is quite high, and the district has done a very good job making sure people know, and they remind them every time there's going to be distributions.
And I would just add to that, Tina, if families are having a difficult time getting to the sites, please let us know that. We will work with the community liaisons to make sure that we can get food to them. That's another program we have in place.
Are we going to continue the iPrime or whatever it was that we were doing for technology? I'm hearing that our Chromebooks are sometimes performing up to par, but there's a lot of, like, microphone malfunctions and camera malfunctions. And so, as we know, that's such a key to keeping things going. So, are we going to keep that going, Rob?
Yes, we will. And Andrew, if you're on the line, if you'd like to speak to that. Andrew's just recently shared some data with me in regards to the number of visits and home visits we've made in regards to IT Prime, over 1,000 home visits to try to help and support. So, Andrew, do you want to add some more to that?
Yeah, no, just that we are looking to shift our resources from the schools to IT Prime and to make sure we're ensuring that the students have the devices they need.
Then, Rob, there's some schools that are coming back this week off quarantine. Do they come back and then go to remote, or are they going to stay remote? What's the plan for some of the ones that are kind of like in-between?
I would say that the plan is for them to return in the event that they're able to. Again, we've had to put four schools on remote again today. We anticipate Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday having to do that additionally as these cases rise. So, you know, again, if you start to think exponentially how this is growing and you see the pattern, I would say that schools that are prepared to come back, they're able to come back, right? But stay tuned, right? Because we can get more information tomorrow, even though it's a holiday. We're getting this information, we're trying to track this down, stay ahead of it the best we can.
And how does this impact sports?
I think that there's new regulations as a safer-at-home, level-orange community. There are implications on being able to have indoor sports. I believe that outdoor sports are still being okayed. We're going to work through those on a case-by-case basis. I believe football season's almost over from the reports that we got today. And then, the indoor sports, from what I understand, most of those start in the beginning of January, so.
So, stay tuned.
I think that, you know, yes, stay tuned. As fast as I've seen this information change, we should all be staying tuned. Not only to what's happening with us in the school district, but what's happening within our community, right? These cases are rising, and it is, I know that both Broomfield County Health and Boulder County Public Health have been working very, very hard to get this message out around, we need to all work together to reverse the trend. I believe that that's the catchy kind of slogan that we'll steal from Broomfield County Health right now. And that this is, unless we work together, this trend won't break until you get to a point where you're going to inevitably, like, we're all going to have to stay home again. I don't see how that goes any other way. So, yes, stay tuned to the extent that we know what's happening with sports. I think that parents and kids can expect to hear from their schools in regards to exactly what's happening.
This is kind of a tangential question, but do we know, maybe Boulder County Public Health knows, are we going to require CU students to get tested before they go home? Because I know there's some concern about spreading when the students start leaving. Do you know what the status is on that?
I am unaware of that status. I don't know, Dr. Urbina?
I can answer that, yep. We're working daily with the CU campus, and the current recommendation is that all students will be tested at least two to three days before they leave and before they come back. And part of that is, we don't want, if our rates are extremely higher in Boulder County, we don't want folks to take that home, nor do we, wherever they end up going, we also want them to be tested before they come back. So, those are the current recommendations. Plus, Boulder's done a great, the CU campus has done a very good job of testing and making available testing for all their students, so this access should not be an issue at all.
And the testing sites are Boulder County Fairgrounds, is that right? I mean, where can families go if they need to get tested?
Sure, sure. I would tell people to visit our website, bouldercounty.org, and you can look at all the testing sites. There's one that just opened up at the fairgrounds. There's also one at the Dazio Field. Those are easily accessible, and I know they're extremely busy.
Are we seeing a slowdown and turnaround of results?
Right now, it varies with the site. It's usually two to three days for those PCR tests, nasal swab, but that's actually fairly good right now.
Thanks again for being such good partners with us, really appreciate it.
Donna?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. I do want to thank Rob for giving us the update on the food distribution. I know that I've heard from families that they really appreciate the gallon of milk each week and some of the other amenities that come in that food distribution. I know that sometimes it's just set right on the doorstep, so that's good to know. I had a question for Boulder County Health, that's probably more for them than for Rob. Is, as far as daycare centers and private schools, what are you seeing with them? Have there been shutdown quarantine recommendations? I'm hearing from community members and from emails that I get and phone calls that many of those schools aren't having the issue, they're not having to shut down. Can you expound on that? Thank you.
Yeah, so we have seen a couple of outbreaks in some of our private institutions, and they, some of them have opted to go remote. If not through the end of the year, some of them will go remote for a couple of weeks. I think the biggest difference is just size of student population. Some of our private schools are as small as 25 students. And so, it's just a smaller group of students. Some of them are able to cohort maybe a little more tightly in smaller groups, depending on the age makeup and the style of school it is. But we are definitely still seeing cases. I think, again, it's just the difference of a large district versus a small independent school. We are seeing quite a few cases in our early childhood centers. I believe right now we have at least 16 or 17 quarantined cohorts within centers, and a couple of our larger centers have had to shut down for a little while. So, we are seeing this spread just across the age range, impacting early childhood as well.
Thank you for that. I know that recently, my little grandson of nine months had an ear infection and ran a fever. So, immediately, yes, he had a COVID test. It was negative. Thank God for that. But I know that there's a lot of precautions going on, so I just wondered, and wanted the question answered because the community is asking daycare centers versus private schools versus, you know, the big public schools. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Helene, could you comment on that for Broomfield, and also talk about the testing that's available there in Broomfield as well?
Yeah, we are seeing similar trends in Broomfield as Heather shared for Boulder. We are working with several childcare centers very closely and have, you know, some that are in outbreak status or many that have one case popping up, one case popping up. So, the cohorting is a big component of being able to keep those other classrooms open. We work with them very closely on just their screening protocols and cleaning and all the different criteria, which it's just like at the school district level, staffing is at times becoming, for some centers, becoming one of the critical pieces of this due to quarantine and/or cases. We do have our testing site that is on Tuesday afternoons. That's at our Health and Human Services Building. That's for Broomfield residents and anyone that works or, you know, works in Broomfield or lives in Broomfield. And so, that has been very busy, as Dr. Urbina noted, about the other locations. Many locations, I believe, are actually filling up before their time of their window. So, there is quite a demand for testing throughout the whole metro region.
Okay. Kitty?
Yes, I have questions for the public health people. And before I ask, I want to also thank everybody for all the hard work you've done. Rob and your team, and Stephanie and her team, and both of the public health agencies have just done super work, so thank you. My question is about emails we get and letters you see in the paper from people who have other sources of information about COVID that they think is better than the information we're getting from you all. And, I mean, I see you there smiling, Dr. Urbina, but what do you say? How do you respond to that?
So, both of our, thank you for the question, Kitty. Both of our communication folks are working full-time in Boulder and in Broomfield to get a different message out there. And I think that we're doing lots of press releases, we're working with our partners, city, and both the cities as well as the county governments. We're also spending a lot of time pushing out media and trying to correct some of that misguided information. And so, my slogan, you can quote me on this one, Rob, is that I like to say, "Spread the information, not the infection." So, I think that we want to give people accurate information so they can do some prevention, to make our community safer. And I think if we do that, you know, it's simple and it's cheap, we can get kids back to school as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
Kitty, also, just from the school district's perspective, I think that, you know, people, it's a testament to our teachers and our schools how bad that parents want their kids in them, right? Like, I take that as a compliment when people are upset that we can't do that. And I don't think that we can expect folks in our community to understand the complexities and pressures, you know, the eight, nine months of pressure we've been under to try to make this work. And so, you know, as folks react and send emails, oftentimes, you know, people angry, people upset. Like, we understand that, like, I get that, trust me. I'm incredibly upset making this announcement to you all and to this community this evening. The fact that we don't have, we aren't able to have our kids in our buildings in a way that we feel like is safe and we can staff is certainly upsetting. But, you know, it's just, I think there's levels of complexities that folks aren't, I can't expect them to understand. I can't expect them what it takes when you have 57 schools and you get 20 cases, and your entire district staff has been farmed out to schools to cover for classes where folks have had to be quarantined, and folks are getting sick, and folks are dealing with sick loved ones. You know, I don't think people will ever feel or understand that, and I don't expect them to. But please know and understand that my, our team, this was an incredibly difficult day to come to this conclusion that we've had to make this decision. But we have a responsibility to do the right thing at the right time, and so that's why we're bringing this recommendation this evening.
Okay. Lisa?
I was just going to say that I think it's very touching to hear you share that, Rob, and I'll just echo, and I'm sure Heather is thinking the same thing. It's really hard for me too and for everyone on my team, and these are not easy decisions. We really, really are, all of us are putting our heads together, what else can be done to avoid a stay-at-home. We all miss the things that we all used to do that were, you know, easy and normal. And we also recognize that the hospitalizations are of concern. And we know a lot of people have mild symptoms, but there is this unknown of why certain people develop weird complexities or weird lingering problems or some people that are hospitalized. And so, it is such a hard decision, and we feel it too here at the health departments. It's not something we hope for, and we're struggling and sad about it as well.
Thank you. Lisa?
Thanks. For public health, no questions, but thanks again for the incredible, ongoing hard work. Rob, for the recommendations, you know, as an elementary school parent and as a working parent, it's tough to hear. But looking at the trends and at the numbers, I really don't think there's any other choice that we can make as a district, and I think this is the right thing to do. I do hope folks who are listening, especially those who are struggling with the news, are thoughtful about choices around gatherings and celebrations in the next month so we can get back to that early January date. I know that I will be counting the days from my house, and I'm sure I will not be the only parent of small children really looking forward to January and hoping to start again then.
Okay. Stacy?
Yeah, I also extend my thanks to everyone and all their hard work, and I ditto what Lisa just said. And, you know, it's clear how agonizing. And, you know, it's clear how agonizing this decision was for all of you. And so I really appreciate that. I do have just a couple quick questions. Would teachers still be allowed in their buildings to teach their class remotely like they were before we went back?
Yes, we believe we're going to be able to make that accommodation for those teachers that want to and continue to be able to do that. Yes, so that's the plan at this point.
Okay, thanks. Also, I know the priority is to get those with intensive needs back into the buildings, but will there maybe be some conversation about having some sort of study hall environment or something for kids who really need just something extra going forward, if it's safe to do so?
I think we can think about that in regards to, you know, some type of an environment for kids in the event that they need that. To the extent that we can do that soon, will just depend on case rates, right? Like, so if the cases continue to climb and things get more and more spread without our community and community transmission begins to go, I think that we'll just have to really confer with our health partners and with our team to the extent of when is it appropriate to be able to do that. But we'll continue to watch the numbers. I think that when you make a decision like this, we're trying to do a few things. Number one, give everybody, give our teachers, give our parents some time, right? We're giving everybody a week before we're letting them know that we're closing. Between now and then, we'll continue to operate on a case-by-case basis. And we're trying to give them just some space to be able to predict what's going to happen between Thanksgiving and the winter break. But we'll continue to look at that, Stacy. And I'll continue to be tuned in and do everything that we can as a school district to support families in ways that are safe and we can sustain.
And then just one last quick thing. And I asked this when we first went to remote months ago about those classes that can't necessarily be taught adequately remotely, such as, I don't know, something with a 3D printer or some PE classes or the House Project in Broomfield that's the math class. Will there be some concessions for those classes going forward? Is that just a school, by school, class-by-class, teacher-by-teacher decision? How are those things going? Now that we know that we'll be remote through the end of this semester, it kind of changes the question a little bit, whereas before it was unknown.
Well, I do think we're going to have to have some time to answer that, you know. You know, like, we've worked through this, you know, today, and this is the first that many of our teachers and other staff are hearing this, right? And so their heads are probably spinning. So we'll just need some time to figure that out. I think that by giving everybody a week, Monday is a launch day, a planning day, in working, as we've talked through this today with BVA and others, we feel like that, you know, we're going to give teachers some space to plan and figure those things out. But those questions are what makes this incredibly difficult, right? Because we know and understand the importance of in-person learning. We know and understand that there are experiences that are incredibly difficult to replicate. So those are things that we'll continue to think about. But to answer, I mean, right now, those are happening on a, just a case-by-case basis.
Thank you, and I don't have any more questions. But again, I support this decision. I don't see that there was any other decision to be made at this point. And I echo Lisa's plea to have people look at, and myself included, we all need to look at our own behavior so that we can fix this and change the trend. It's frustrating, but we can all make a difference doing that. So thanks again.
Okay, and I have a couple of clarifying questions as well. One is that we sometimes hear about how school employees have been deemed essential. And I think that there's some confusion in the community as to what that means. I understand that it's not a mandate that schools be open or that people show up to work, but that we get some flexibility in meetings. So for instance, tonight, we're obviously several unrelated households meeting in an indoor room with masks, and that's what an essential gives you. But it does not give us a way out of, for instance, complying with the new quarantine guidelines that were issued by a CD-PHE. So could someone speak a little bit to that?
I can, and then if anybody else wants to chime in. I think that, you know, recently, and I think the term was critical, right? That schools were critical, deemed like critical businesses, I think is, or a critical business or a critical function.
Yeah, critical businesses.
So, and to the extent that there is the flexibility within some school districts, within some school communities to continue to run even as cases rise and jump. But to your point, nobody is immune from the CD-PHE quarantining guidelines, right? And I think as you see as school districts across the Denver metro, big, large school districts with lots of sites, with lots of employees, with lots of kids, right? It doesn't take many cases, what we've seen, to begin to start to quarantine enough people, right? Where then you don't have enough staff to run because we don't have the reserves. And I think that I've shared with this community, with this board before, that our substitute pool has been cut in half during this pandemic. So we don't have substitutes to come and cover staff. We've emptied out the central offices. The issues that we're seeing is when you empty out the central offices and then there's a school that's quarantined, your backups get quarantined too, right? So every quarantine, and, you know, as we've, half of our schools right now have been impacted by quarantine one way or the other, more than half, that your pool, your reserve pool just shrinks and shrinks and shrinks. And so again, those aren't things that I expect folks to fully understand. I just share that to say that even though we were deemed critical, it doesn't eliminate the needs to do these, to follow the quarantine and guidelines by CD-PHE, which are restrictive for a reason, right? And inevitably, they're restricting us to a place where we don't feel that it is, you know, it's not even feasible to begin to operate and continue to operate as a school district, so, in an in-person manner.
Thank you. Another comment I just wanted to make was how difficult this also is for teachers. Sometimes we get emails that suggest that this is kind of like a break for teachers to do remote learning. I would think from my conversations with the several friends that I have that are teachers that remote learning is extraordinarily challenging in terms of the time it takes, in terms of the frustration with some of the difficulties we all have with technologies. If you remember the start of this very board meeting, we had about four different things go wrong in five minutes. It's not uncommon. So I just want to applaud the teachers who are sticking with us and facing the challenges that we bring, both with in-person, hybrid, hydraflex, whatever that one is, and an all-remote situation. People who go into teaching really care about kids, and they care about their learning. And so I would imagine the frustration is so great when we know that we may not be doing everything we can for those kids in this remote environment. And I just want to call that out, that this is going to be really hard for our teachers as well as we navigate yet another part of this, of a new situation. And then another thing that I think we as a board should talk about is how we're going to advocate to our local government and our federal government policies and stances that better support the opening of schools and prioritizing our students over other entities in the state. The reality is, next week, my child will not go to school, but I can go to a bar with a lot of people and have a drink. I'm not sure that's the way it's supposed to work. So I think we all need to think about what that looks like and how we can start thinking about putting our students first in this pandemic. I think the cost of the lost learning and the mental health issues are going to be significant over time, and we're extending that period. So that's just another thing I wanted to share where my head has been. And the last thing, as I did talk to, speak, or touch on mental health, and I am wondering if there's a way that we can distribute resources back to our parents or in contacts, because we have now been in this really uncertain situation since March. I think people are beginning to fray. I think we are going to see negative behaviors and feelings and uncertainty affecting our families. And I'm hoping that there's a way we can proactively provide contacts. I don't think we have a budget to provide all the counseling that people probably could use, but if there's anything we can do to connect them with the resources in the community. Especially holidays are notoriously a difficult time, especially as many of us face that we may not be seeing our family, so.
A couple of things, yes. I think that we can work to provide those resources. And I just want to, Tina, echo the comments in regards to our teachers and our employees. And I'm a career educator. This is my 22nd year in education, most of those spent in schools. I've worked in very successful school districts, Boulder Valley included. And when I tell you that we have the very best teachers I've ever worked with, I've never seen that more evident than what I've seen over the course of the past four months. I've watched, I've watched teachers just step up and rise to the challenge this year and at the end of last year to meet the needs of our kids. I've seen so many of our employees go above and beyond, many of them doing that while dealing with personal issues related to COVID, many of them doing that while genuinely scared for their own safety and the safety of their loved ones. And the efforts of our teachers, of our employees during this pandemic has been nothing short of heroic. I just need for everybody to know and understand that. And the people are the strength of our district. And as we think about making these decisions that are very, very hard for us to make, right? We also have to understand that not only do we have 30,000 kids that we have to take care of, we have 5,000 employees that rely on us to make sure that we're creating environments that are safe to work in, where they're not, we're not taking undue risks. And I will tell you that that certainly weighs into these decisions. I appreciate you bringing that up for our teachers that are listening and watching this or maybe will hear about this. Just thank you. Thank you for all that you've done. Your, our employees are just the heart of this district, and I just really appreciate you sharing that.
Kathy?
I just wanted to follow up on what you just said, Tina. And maybe this is a question for Dr. Urbina, but I heard rumblings that the directors of county health departments are trying to get together to ask for a more coordinated approach because I think this isolated county-by-county approach may not be ultimately the best way to bring this virus back under control. So I'm wondering, maybe you can't talk about that, but it sure seems like we need to have a little more coordinated approach than just county-by-county.
Sure, I can talk about that. There's a group of metro Denver public health directors that meet weekly that are talking about strategies that they can collectively, and that's why you see some of the data that both Helene and Heather shared, is we're trying to present the Denver metro area as one community. And so we share with you the data that's happening. The same thing is true about strategies because we know Adams County affects Broomfield, Broomfield affects Boulder, Boulder affects Broomfield, and Jefferson affects all of us. And so I think that we're trying to have consistent policies, fat mask-wearing, physical distancing, the schools and some of the strategies. So, because we know people move from county to county. And so the answer is yes. Are we totally effective? Not always, because each county has their own separate Board of Health. But we try to be as consistent as we possibly can in the light of having, you know, a state government that is so variable, you know, rural Colorado is so different than the Denver metro area. So we are trying to do that. Rest assured that we're doing our best to make that happen.
Okay, anything else? Richard?
Yeah, Tina, I want to echo what you just said, especially around mental health. One of the things that we're finding is that the incidence of domestic violence has increased. It's going off the roof. And I believe that somehow we need to coordinate more closely with the mental health folks to help alleviate that because it is becoming very, very problematic, and something's got to be done because I believe that COVID has now reached this apex in terms of all the other things happening that is wrong with families and the way they're behaving and all of that. But I really appreciate your mentioning the mental health aspect of it because it's critical.
Donna?
Yeah, I want to, I want to thank Richard and Tina for bringing this up, and Rob as well, and just our Boulder County health officials for realizing that, I heard today on a news broadcast that sacred to health issues are way down. That's an indication that people aren't calling in with the violence episodes or there's a local pastor that I just heard his sermon last week, and it brings chills to me when I try to reiterate it. But in the last nine months, he's had seven suicide services. And I know that we're reaching a point in our, not only with our schools, but with our community, that we have to coordinate with our own school psychologists, social workers, and health officials to try to offer whatever services we can. So thanks.
Okay, any other comments?
I was just going to share that in Broomfield Public Health, we are actually trying to pull some of the data that's just looking for any, just any increases and any awareness of trends that we can see in suicide rates. And so we actually are, have a group working on that. And we work really closely with mental health partners and community reach and the schools. And so I hope that we can continue that because it is a high priority and it is a recognized need in numerous work settings and school settings and home settings in terms of the mental health impact that COVID's taking. And there was already issues going on in suicides of concern even before COVID. So hopefully, we can all kind of continue to work more on that in the future.
Thank you, Helene. All right, any other last comments? Okay, so Rob, thank you for all of the staff's work. Oh, Dr. Urbina? Oh, you're muted.
Hi, because I have to leave. Thank you all.
Okay. Thanks for joining us. So thanks again for all the work you all put into this decision. I think we all knew it might be coming. It's not hard to guess with the horrible trend lines in our community. But again, it's going to be a hard time, and I'm sorry that our kids won't be in-person learning. It's the best place for them to be, and we know it. And hopefully, we get them back there as soon as we can. So with that, we'll go on to our next item, which is public participation. So to participate in the virtual environment or the hybrid environment in this case, you need to call the board secretary, Laura Schaefer. You can find that on bvsd.org, or you can just Google BVSD, Board of Education, and right there is a link for public participation. And if you connect with Laura prior to noon of the day of the meeting, she'll put you on the list to speak at the board meeting. So we just asked that you can find your presentation to two minutes, and Laura will show you a different colored card, yellow when you have 30 seconds, and when you have 10, an orange card. And then because of the virtual environment, we'll just mute you at two minutes, which is sort of different. And that's it. So we only have one person on public participation this evening. Christine Johnson?
Thank you. I would like to thank you all for what just happened. That was incredibly difficult, and I appreciate how much care you all put into it. I'm here to speak about school resource officers and disproportionate discipline. And I want to acknowledge that they've both been a regular focus of the school board this year. Considering the opportunity gaps which exist in the district and which have persisted for years, this is wholly appropriate, and BVSD must leave no stone unturned in its effort to create equitable learning environments for all students, and in particular, to do right by students who are disproportionately harmed by systems which uphold institutional racism. We presented you with data and resources in May and June, and these have been underscored and confirmed by your own research review and by district advisory groups. Countless students, family members, and community advocates have shared their own heart-wrenching stories, which provide human faces for the impact of a disciplinary landscape which is uneven, unequal, and unfair. At the meeting two weeks ago, I heard hesitation on the part of some of the school board members. There is overwhelming evidence suggesting that big changes are necessary in the way BVSD addresses student behavior and supports vulnerable students. Please do the right thing. Once again, I ask you to move boldly forward on behalf of students of color, Black and Latina students in particular, and fully commit to removing all school resource officers as soon as possible, before the next school year preferably. I urge you immediately and transparently to develop a timeline for finishing the job of overhauling school discipline with an eye to equity. And I urge you to develop a plan which aims to make schools a place for all of our kids, in particular, students of color, especially Black and Latina students, students with I's and 504 plans, and LGBTQ students. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public participation. Our next item is board communication. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say at this time? Richard?
I, I just want to thank Christine for her comments and also for the sad news that we got tonight. And it's unfortunate that we're going to have to shut our schools down, at least for a while. But I, I, I just have a need to say a couple of things, especially around creating opportunities for our kids of color and our low-income kids in our school district. I think most of you know that I've been around this community for a great number of years, and I've seen our school district go in ebbs and flows as it relates to creating opportunities for our kids of color. And there were times that we had some good things going, and then things fell apart, and, and we took them off. And I can recall many, many instances in where we did the right thing, and then we took the right thing off, and then we replaced it with something else. And, and we're still in the same place, and we're not really pushing that envelope or pushing that, that forward in terms of what are we going to do to really create these opportunities for kids. I think this whole discussion of SROs, I think, is just one aspect of everything else that we need to talk about. It's not just SROs that we're concerned about. I think we're looking at the kids that are not going into AP classes, the kids that are not going into engineering classes, the kids that are not going into IB programs, we're looking at the achievement gap. We're looking at the fact that we have literature in our system that is not, a lot of the literature is not written by authors of color. We're looking at a, a curriculum that needs to be re-looked at and revamped and everything else. So I guess what I'm doing right now is kind of ventilating just a little bit because I am getting frustrated that we can't move this forward fast enough. And I know that the pandemic is getting in the way. But it shouldn't stop us from doing the right work and the right thing that we need to do. So I just want to urge us to take all of these things into consideration when we're looking at all aspects in creating opportunities for kids of color in our school district. So please listen to the community, please listen to what I'm saying, please listen to the both committees that we put together to work on this, because that, those recommendations that committee made, they're not just about closing or eliminating SROs. We all know what they talked about. They talked about relooking at the curriculum. They talked about anti-racism in the school. They talked about a lot of stuff. So we really need to get going on this, and, and sooner the better. And, and it's just something that I needed to say. Thank you very much for listening.
Okay, Kathy?
Thank you, Christine, for coming forward, and thank you, Richard, for your plea. I just have a quick thing to talk about. The CASB Task Force on Equity met on Friday, and they are changing this, it sounds so kind of trivial, but anyway, they're changing their mission statement, and I just thought I'd read what the new mission statement is because it kind of follows what you're talking about for equity. So the new mission statement is, and we'll vote on this, is advancing excellence in public education and equity for each and every student through effective leadership by the collective action of locally-elected boards of education. So we continue to have readings every week and videos we're supposed to be doing, and we hope to bring some more effort to the board and then to be able to translate that equity work to each of the school districts. So it is something that we all take very seriously, and I look forward to a continued partnership. So, thank you.
Okay. Donna, any comments? I can't see her really. Donna, any comment?
No, no. A lot of internet, a lot of internet directions, sorry.
Okay. Kitty?
Yes, I want to thank Richard too for what you said. And correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that we have some people working on improving the literature and making sure that we have different perspectives represented in the authors. Is that right, Rob? I mean, I thought that's, I thought I saw that.
Excellence through equity, if you Google that on our website, it shows all of the initiatives that we have underway. So in regards to many of the things that, that Richard spoke to, we do have initiatives and underway, and, and so, and that is included.
And that's what those, the two graduates who have contacted us were talking about. So I'm glad to see that we're doing that. Also want to talk a little bit just about the CASB Delegate Assembly. I was going to bring the booklet with me, and I forgot, but I did email it to everybody. So you all saw the resolutions that passed. There were far fewer of them than there have been in other years, so it was, made it quite a bit easier. And I did make the plea to narrow the focus of the resolutions to keep it focused on, you know, what we, you know, our immediate needs right now. But not everybody agreed with me, so that's okay. But, yeah, I don't think, nothing stands out for me about that. Yeah, Kathy?
Tell me if I'm wrong, Kitty, but the one that surprised me is there was a resolution on climate change that passed by one vote, which kind of stunned me.
All right. Lisa, any comments?
Nothing new to add, but thanks to Christine and thanks to Richard for everything they had to say. You know, I, I agree completely with everything that each of you had to say, and I really appreciate you taking the time to say it.
And Stacy? Okay.
Nothing today.
Okay. Thank you. So our next item is an information item. It's our legislative update. So, and board members, just to know where, so you know where we are in the legislative process, you've been receiving updates from our two lobbyists about who's in charge and who's been elected to head different committees and to be the majorities and the leaders on each of the, in each of the two houses. The other, the next step also is that we're scheduling a time to meet with our legislators. We have a couple of newly-elected legislators, and you'll get an invitation to some type of virtual breakfast or lunch when we find a time that works for everyone. So, and then, and then the last update is that later on our agenda today, we'll be looking at the legislative platform. So that's, that's sort of the update. Anything to add, Kathy?
Looking forward to hearing the governor's budget proposal tomorrow.
Good.
It looks like November 30th is the meeting with the legislators.
Oh, it's been done. That's great.
Laura sent us the email.
Okay, so there's one email I missed. All right. So that'll be good. And so you can think about, you know, we'll, we'll walk them through the legislative platform, and I'll connect with everyone to talk about how we're going to do that. All right. Is everyone okay to move on to action items, or does anyone need a break? Action items? Great. So our next item are the consent grouping. I'll read the list of items. 8.1, Personnel Items, 8.2, Approval of Minutes, October 27, 2020, Special Meeting, 8.3, Approval of Minutes, October 27, 2020, Regular Meeting, 8.4, Approval of Minutes, October 29, 2020, Special Meeting, 8.5, Acceptance of Donation, Douglas Elementary, 8.6, Acceptance of Donation, Eisenhower Elementary, 8.7, Acceptance of Donation, Manhattan Middle School, 8.8, Approval of Family Resource Schools Contract for Intergovernmental Service Agreement between BVSD and the City of Boulder, 8.9, Approval of the Atlas Rubicon West Contract, 8.10, Brand Information Technology As for Connecting Students Grant, whoops, Connecting Colorado Students Grant, Colorado Department of Education, funny. Okay, so that's it. Are there any board members that would like to pull an item from consent grouping? Okay, seeing none. Could we get a motion to approve the?
Slow move.
By Richard and seconded by Kitty. And now we have an opportunity to ask questions about the items on consent. Kathy?
Thanks, Tina. I have some questions for, for you, Rob, on the curriculum management system. So when I look at the, the RFP, it seems like it's a, as you, it's kind of a consistent theme for me, that I don't want to see us move to a system where we are so top-down that everybody on the same day is on the same page, and that we lose some of the creativity and talent that we have in our teaching force. And when I read the RFP, it made me concerned that we were headed in that direction. And I'm looking specifically at some of the language on page eight. The contract doesn't really look at it. It looks like we're buying more of a customized kind of box to put some of the information in. But I was just wondering if you could just address that, please?
Absolutely. In no uncertain terms are we, are we destined to a place where we're trying to tell people and script their lessons and telling them what to teach? I think that the, what is, what is free or approval this evening, board members, is, is an opportunity for us to really develop a warehouse, or a box, as Kathy put it, to house the great work that's happening as part of our strategic plan, the prioritized standards, the, you know, all of the, all of the, the work that happened with our teams of teachers that developed that over the course of the past year. And so, you know, so just to be clear to this board and to this community and to any teachers or community members out there, that is not a strategy that's going to maximize the talents of our teachers. And we want to certainly make sure that we are on the same page in regards to the standards that we teach to prepare kids properly. But we're not trying to, we're not going to get to a place where we're scripting day-to-day lessons for our teachers. And I'll ask Sam Messier to add any other content that she feels is relevant to the conversation, as she's the one who is overseeing this RFP process and is bringing this forward.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. So in addition to what Dr. Anderson, Anderson has shared about the, the purpose of the curriculum management system really being to, to house all of the great products that are being created as part of the strategic plan, I also want to point out that it is replacing a key system that we're sunsetting. So our entire course catalog and the Curriculum Essentials documents up to this point have been housed in a, a system called SharePoint. That system is something that we've been seeking to sunset, as it doesn't really serve our needs. And this new system would replace that. So we have had some, a, a software system serving in this role. We're just seeking to move to a new one with some added functionality that allows us to add some of, some things like the scope and sequence, the instructional model, and, and some of the great resources that we've been developing to support our teachers. I'd also like to just invite Kyle Addington, our Director of Curriculum and Standards for the East Network, to just briefly share a little bit more about what the capabilities of the system are going to be and how those will enhance our strategic plan.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Messier, and thank you to the board. I think it's a really exciting system to give us an opportunity to share more of a full picture of what the strategic plan is. So when we think about, how do we explain what our prioritized standards are? How do they, how do we begin to develop a, a general scope and sequence for our district? How do we begin to share things like instructional practice? That's a functionality that we've, we haven't had before. And I think being able to tie all of those pieces together is, is really important, and being able to tie it together from the perspective of our teachers is something that's new and something that's really exciting. So, yeah, I think it's, I think it's, I think the comments by Dr. Anderson and Dr. Messier are right on point. It's not a day-to-day scripted lesson plan. I try to describe it as we're kind of like painting new lines on the highway. We're not just building a new highway and forcing everybody on it, but we need to have kind of the guidelines on, on the road to make sure we're all kind of headed in the right directions. And I think that's a good way to explain it. I'll stop there, but I can go into more of the other functionalities that the system has if that's useful.
As I understand it, I just want the teachers to know that this is not something that will be on their plate this semester or next semester, that, that training and all that will not come until the fall, I think, at the soonest, so we're not trying to overload them with a new system. Is that correct? I, I think everyone's feeling a little overloaded right now.
A little bit. Yeah.
That's correct. Although we're purchasing the system now, the implementation of the system going live with schools won't happen until fall of 2021.
And we all know we're, we're trying to watch our pennies. The reason that we're having to do this now is what you said, Dr. Messier, is because we're retiring an old system that's no longer functional, and we need to, we need to update and, and replace that one. So that's why the request is coming at this point. Is that a, did I understand that correctly?
That, that's absolutely correct, yes.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Kitty?
For the schools that can't raise that kind of, oh, am I, oh, ah, I'm not, I was muted. I just worry.
I just worry.
No, that's supposed, not supposed to be muted. Wait, I'm so confused. I just worry that what we're putting aside can't possibly do for our schools that can't afford to raise the money what the wealthier schools are doing. And I don't know that I have a, a solution for that. I just think about it and think, what, what are we doing with the, what are the schools able to do with the, the percentage that they get from the other schools?
And I think that's a great topic to bring up at our prioritization meeting. And I, because I think that's, there's conversation around that. I think DAC has talked about it. They do a review every five years. It's Policy KH, and it talks about the 10% that's given that's only used for employing people. It's not used for hard goods like toilet paper or stuff like that. So I think that's something we could talk about and just learn more. You can also do it as an RFI.
Thank you. Just was getting to me.
Yeah. Any questions? Richard?
I just want to make a comment on the Family Resource Schools, that contract. I'm really appreciative that we have that contract, and we're gonna send it off. And I just want to make a comment in terms of the services that are provided by FRSs and the fact that we have them at Columbine, Creekside, Crestview, University Hill, and Whittier Elementary International. And the reason I want to make a comment is, in my past life, I mean, Family Resource Schools have been around for four decades already. And in my past life, I was a Family Resource School Coordinator. And I know how well they function and the service they provide to community, especially around trying to bring resources into one place. And I just want to talk a little bit more about that. At some point, I would like to see if we couldn't get some of these particular Family Resource School people maybe at a work session, so we could hear from them and learn more from them in terms of the great work that they're doing, and some of the preventive stuff that's going on. And it seems to me like when we're talking about domestic violence and more mental health services, well, that's what the Family Resource Schools do provide, you know? And I think we should learn from the experiences that these five schools have had over four decades.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up as well. I think I always like to thank the City of Boulder for putting that tax out to their community. So that's paid with the Boulder-specific tax, and it's just invested in the City of Boulder schools. So if you're in Lafayette and you wonder why you don't have that, that's why.
Right.
So it, so it's sort of a unique program, and it speaks to the uniqueness of each of the communities we serve. We know that there are other things like the Mental Health Buddies in Broomfield that's not existing in Boulder. So it is really great that they have that service, and I think we appreciate it quite a bit.
Yeah, and I think this is a perfect example in terms of the partnerships that we have. And I know that we've talked about how do we get more partnerships into our system and, and do that work. And I know that we were at a verge of maybe hiring a partnership director or something like that, but we don't know where that's at now. And I would like to bring that up and see what, where we're at with it.
Any other comments about the consent agenda? I'm not seeing any from the Zoom gallery. So Laura, would you mind calling the role? Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, so our next item is an item that was pulled from last meeting's agenda. And the item is the Amendment to the Design Build Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Centennial Middle School, Community Montessori Fireside Elementary School, Horizons K-8, Manhattan Middle School, Platt Middle School, and Bryan Elementary School. These all pertain to air conditioning upgrades. To start the discussion, we first need a motion to approve. By Kitty, does anyone want to second it? Richard, thank you. Okay, so, Rob, do you want to let us know where we are on this?
Certainly. I'm going to have, have Rob Price just to provide the, the board just a quick update on how this has come to approval for you all. And I know that this is, we've been discussing this for, for quite some time. So, Rob Price, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, board members. We originally started this discussion, if you recall, back in February of 2019, which the board had asked me to bring forward our recommendations on how we would spend any remaining bond proceeds. And if you remember at that time, that was a work session where we brought back several projects, one being the Rec Field House. And at the time, we had 17 schools that were not air-conditioned in this district, not including the Mountain Schools, which are the two Netherlands schools, Gold Hill and Jamestown. At that time, we had commented that we thought we could do 11 of the 17 schools with the remaining bond proceeds. At the last CBAC meeting, we brought forward a motion, which CBAC approved unanimously, to air condition all remaining schools with the remaining bond proceeds, knowing that NuVista was not completed yet. So, that was supported by CBAC, therefore, we moved it forward. The total cost of the project is a little over $16 million, about 16.1 million. Right now, we are forecasting that we have 14.9 million. And at the end of this bond program, we will have all remaining schools air-conditioned. So, at this time, I would turn it back over to the board to ask any specific questions.
I just hit the wrong button. Sorry about that. Should we just go in alphabetical? Richard, do you have any questions? Kathy, got questions?
I do. So, Rob, these schools were not as contemplated as the original part of the bond promise that we made to the community for air conditioning. Is that true?
That is correct.
And NuVista has been part of what our commitment has been to the community. So, what is our plan for, my understanding is the NuVista facility, from my memory of going through it, and shoot, I went to it when it was Baseline Junior High, and I think it looks about the same from 100 years ago. So, what is our commitment for working with that community and fast-tracking a solution to getting that school up to what I think would be BVSD standards for a program that I think we've seen has a longstanding history of serving a very wonderful group of students, and we don't hear from them very often. And I want to make sure that we are honoring our commitment to them and that we have a plan for doing something for that school other than just, I don't know, a few coats of paint and a few small things. So, can you talk about that?
I can. So, next Tuesday evening, we have a work session with the Board of Education. Right now, the deficiencies at NuVista significantly surpass what we have in the budget. And as we're looking at different facilities, we compare facilities by using a Facility Condition Index, and that Facility Condition Index is getting to the point that we have to make good decisions on how we would spend taxpayer money. And I think this is a point that, do we continue to build additions, renovate that building, or start thinking about a replacement facility? So, we will be bringing a recommendation forward to the board at the Tuesday meeting that will consist of putting together a working group that would then bring back a recommendation to the Board of Education.
And my understanding is there will be various options pursued other than just replacing the building. Is that a fair, I mean, we're going to wait and see what the working group from that school and that community, what kinds of options they want to look at?
We will look at all options. I mean, we have a promise in the master plan, so we will continue to look at master plan work. We would look at renovating or expanding the master plan work, and then also looking at, you know, what is the cost of a replacement building, if that's where the committee goes with that, and then developing a long-term plan on how we could implement each one of those possibilities.
Or, or significant renovations, just different options will be presented to the working group. And what's your sense of the timing of that? Because they are the very last project, and they've waited a long time, and I don't want to see them have to wait another four or five years to have a facility that we can all be proud of.
And we, you know, we will bring a plan, a timeline to you next Tuesday, but, you know, just thinking about this, this is something we can move on quickly. We've got several Citizen Bond Oversight Committee members that would like to be part of this process. I would like to bring some of the NuVista, you know, the principal, assistant principals, teachers along. We've got other community members that would like to be part of this process. So, you know, I think this will take a few months, but possibly bringing your recommendation back to the board in February should be expected.
And then this plan requires spending some money out of cap reserve, which I don't think we've seen a whole itemization of that, but trusting your opinion that this is a good use and one of the highest uses that you think we have for our cap reserve funds right now?
You know, I do. I think air conditioning has been discussed in this district for decades, and, you know, we talk about equity among schools. I think if you reach out to those schools that didn't have air conditioning a few years ago that do now, I think you would find that it's an incredibly important attribute to the facility. So, so, yes, I prioritized it back in February of 2019, and I would prioritize it today.
And my understanding is that you have a thought about how you could at least get air conditioning into NuVista while we're trying to figure this out, because my understanding is it actually is one of our hottest schools.
It is, and, you know, one of the challenges we have right now is with the electrical switchgear. It's outdated switchgear, so short-term plan would be to replace that to where we could put portable air conditioners in that building. That's what has prevented us at several of our schools, is we just don't have the electrical, electrical capacity in the building. So, that would be one of the first items that we would do, is replace that switchgear, get new feeds ran into each one of the classrooms, which would allow us to put some portable cooling in each one of those spaces. That's a short-term solution to a long-term problem.
All right, well, I look forward to hearing what the various options are into the conversation, because I've always been really excited about the NuVista school and the programs that it offers, and I think it has a long enough history of serving enough diverse students that we really need to make sure that that is one of our highest priorities now going forward, now that we've solved some of these other problems. Thanks, Rob. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, Rob. If you could just remind me in terms of the master plan, what did we have included in the NuVista?
If you remember, a lot of our buildings were deferred maintenance, and that's exactly what NuVista was. So, NuVista started out about a $9 million project. We've added inflation funds, et cetera. It's up to about 13 million, but the majority of that work is mechanical system, roof, new windows, asbestos abatement, new electrical system throughout, some fire system upgrades, but very little cosmetic work to NuVista. It's really, the majority of the bond was deferred maintenance.
Other questions, Kitty? And on Zoom? Rob, just one clarifica, oh, Lisa, go.
Hi, I thought we were going to go in, in order there. Yeah, just following up on what Kathy was asking, how does our moving forward today with this agenda impact our ability to take care of the needs at NuVista?
Rob, you're immune, okay.
Yep, no, no. And Lisa, I think right now, moving forward, we have several options that we will discuss at next Tuesday's meeting, you know, financing options on how to solve some of the NuVista issues, right? Is you meet the promise that was made in the, in the master plan, that's one option, right? And the funds in the current master plan would do that. Do we try to expand that? And we will present some options next week. If you went all, all the way out and built a new facility, we would probably have to look at a future bond program to do that, and in the meantime, we would meet the critical needs at the NuVista site. So, again, these options will be discussed next Tuesday. But in order to meet the air conditioning needs next summer, we would need direction tonight in order to do that.
Thank you. So, I'm sorry, I'm not sure that, that was quite, voting yes on this agenda item today, does that or does that not impact the conversation that we'll have about NuVista next and the options that are available to us for NuVista?
You know, right now, you are making, it's, this is a $14.9 million decision. So, that's what's remaining in the bond program. So, if, if the board elected, you could spend those dollars differently than what I have, what I have asked and what I have recommended with air conditioning. So, we took board direction when we prioritized the remaining bond proceeds, and that's what we have moved forward with. So, at the time, NuVista was out there, and, you know, this again has been supported by our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. So, to answer your question, yes, this could impact, but we have other financing mechanisms that we can move forward with if the board decides to do something different than what is outlined in the master plan.
Okay, thank you.
Rob, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So, the $13 million for NuVista are still available for NuVista?
That is correct.
Okay, so this doesn't impact what was originally promised to the voters in the bond?
Correct.
Okay, so that, because we never promised a new facility or anything like that. So, we, so we're just, so we're just saying we have some extra funds, and we're prioritizing air conditioning, because we've gotten to this point where we just have this handful of schools that don't have it, and it's starting to feel uncomfortable that some have it and some don't.
That is correct.
Okay. All righty. Any other questions or comments?
Tina?
Yeah.
But to be clear, that $14 million could go to NuVista, but we're waiting till we have community engagement to figure out what our solution's going to be for NuVista, because we've not had that community involvement yet. Is that, we haven't met with them?
I, I would say that, Rob, I'll just speak really quick. I've met with the teachers, and we've talked kind of where they are in the bond. I did that last year. I do, I do think that as, as you'll hear next week, engaging the community, engaging the teachers, you have a lot of teachers at NuVista that have been there since day one. They have an amazing vision and passion, and regardless of what we would think, I promise you, they're going to be able to guide and direct the future of NuVista in the right direction. I have full confidence in the administration and faculty out there. It's a special place, Kathy, to your point. It is, it is, it's just an incredible place for our kids. So, to the extent that, that we're, we're going to engage them for sure and listen and hear to what they, they, that they feel like that they need to continue to that successful program, you know, you would hear about that more during that work session next week.
Richard?
Rob, I, I recall when we were talking about the different scenarios for NuVista way back when, and there were a bunch of different possibility, possibilities in terms of making sure NuVista could be a building that we could all be proud of. And I remember, recall that part of that conversation included some of the money that's going to be set aside now for air conditioning. And if that was the case then, and we're voting on it now, that means that $14,000 will be off the plate in order to go back and fix NuVista the way it should be.
Richard, when we met back in February 2019, it, you know, I just wanted, it was clear that any remaining bond proceeds would go towards air conditioning. So, we talked about several projects, one of those being the air conditioning of all of the remaining schools in the district. So, you know, we have originally, NuVista started out as a $9 million project. We've given that project $3.8 million for inflation, for innovation, et cetera. So, that is up to a $13 million project. Now, again, we can meet the master plan at that project, and this is what we will talk about next week. It's the challenge with where the building is at currently today. It was built in 1952. It's lived its useful life. Now, we've got to make a hard decision what we want to continue to do with that building. But, you know, we were given very clear direction back in February of 19 on what to do with those remaining proceeds. We've presented all of this information to our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and they have supported these decisions as we've moved forward, as did they support the remaining funds going towards air conditioning when we met last month.
Well, I just want to make a plea that we aren't, we haven't been constrained by just what we said in the master plan for many of our other projects, and we've come and spent money on lots of other expansions and things that were not included in the master plan. So, I'm hoping that we have a bigger vision for NuVista and that that's not what we're seeing to constrain ourselves as we look forward, because I think also, if I'm not mistaken, Rob, we've found that it's actually in worse condition than we thought, and so we need to address that for those students. So, I'm a reluctant okay on this, as long as I have a strong commitment that we are going to look at fixing it sometime soon, not in 2025, and do something, hopefully, that's more significant than just fixing some electrical systems.
Any other comments? All right, well, we, the motion is to approve the air conditioning. Laura, do you want to call the roll?
Garcia?
No.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
No.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we'll look forward to the meeting next week to talk about, or whenever it is, the next couple of weeks to talk about next steps. And our next item, is everyone okay, or does anyone need a break? Okay, we're going to take a, a 10-minute break, and then we'll be back for our next item. We're back?
We're back.
Oh, sorry, I just did the echo thing. So, we just had a little issue where board members in the boardroom couldn't access the resolution. Board members at home, are you able to access it? Yes? Okay, seeing face is not. All right, terrific. All right, who wants to start the discussion on this resolution? Anyone have any comments?
I.
Richard?
Yeah, I, I just want to get to the last bullet, because I think everything else makes a lot of sense to me.
Okay.
I, I just want to get some more clarification on the last bullet where we talk about the comprehensive plan, including a target date for ending the current SRO program of January 2022?
Yes.
Or is it on January?
It reads to me as of.
Of, okay. And, and, that seems like a long time for me, and... So, could we have some more conversation in terms of maybe shortening that length of time that we're going to get that comprehensive plan? The comprehensive plan is due on May 1st, right? Is that the way I'm reading this?
Yes, I believe so.
No later than May 1, 2021, in accordance with the board's normal budget cycle to present the comprehensive plan, including a target date for ending the current SRO program of January 2022. So, the comprehensive plan will include that, that by 2022 will...
I, I think that the writing, the, the way that this is written, the, the May 1st is, is in accordance, like, if you don't, if I don't bring a plan May 1, 2021, I'll miss the budget cycle. And we know that there's going to have to be additional investments in this, right? So, I believe that that's where that is. And so, to the extent that the plan, you won't wait, you won't have to wait to hear from me on May 1, 2021. What this resolution directs me is to provide quarterly updates on, and where we are along in the process. I would say one of the challenges that we'll have, when I compare what we are up against versus other school districts that have kind of taken this path, is that many of them are only dealing with one, they're only going to be developing one inter-agency or intergovernmental agency agreement. We're going to have to have six, right? So, I mean, it's just going to take more and more time. But I do say, I'm, I'm comfortable with January 2022. I wouldn't be comfortable with anything earlier than that. I just think that it's going to take, it's going to take time to work with our different agencies to understand and how those relationships are restructured. It's going to take time to talk to each individual school, to the kids, impacted families, you know, with, through the guidance of this resolution, to understand what are the resources that we're seeking to solve the problems we're trying to solve in the schools, right? Ultimately, with the goal of ensuring that when we think, when we look at our discipline, when we look at arrests, that... arrests, that those things are no longer disproportionate, right, and this is this is a worthy cause, I do think that the resolution gives the flexibility, but I don't, you're not going to have to wait till May first twenty twenty-one to hear from us in regards to how things are going or where we are, because I am going to have to keep the board up to date as we're navigating and negotiating these six different intergovernmental agreements that that will start to try to make them the same, but depending upon how that goes, maybe they look a little bit different, right, I think that the spirit of this is that that we need to be, that by May, we have to be able to say to you all, this is how we're going to to replace the in-school services to solve these issues, and that by January twenty twenty-two, to the extent that the school resource officer position that is that is embedded in schools, that that has to change, right, and by that date is the way that I read this.
Kitty?
Oh, it wouldn't turn on, I don't really have a question, but I know at the last DAC meeting, there were some folks who were really concerned that they that they should, not they specifically, maybe, but that parents and teachers and and community members can be part of the process, so I'm just acknowledging that, and that this is in here on this second, or yeah, second bullet point.
Okay, and then Lisa?
I think this language is better than where we were two weeks ago, it's still not as strong as I would like, I think one of my questions is, I know the language difference in the two dates, and I wonder why we're comfortable with saying no later than for the May date, but we back that down to a target date for the January twenty twenty-two date.
So, the May first date is a hard date, because it is part of the board's budget process, and that was the reason that that date was made specific.
Thanks, maybe I should have clarified, I understand why that date is as clear as it is, I don't understand why our second date isn't equally clear, if we're saying that we can get it done by then, and if we're already losing, is it four or is it five SROs in in six weeks?
Yeah, I think I heard at the last meeting, there was some hesitation around a date at all, so we looked to find a balance that had a date that's our target date, but had a little bit of flexibility in case we ran into a problem, but the idea was to get a date in there, so that was sort of a compromise with the different voices I heard at the board table, but this is this is an opportunity to, if the majority of the board wants to change that, or if they want to take out the date altogether, we can do that.
Can I ask one more here then?
Oops, and then Kitty?
I guess I I hear what you're saying, and I don't know if endless negotiation of language tonight is going to get us where we need to go, but I think I would love to hear from Rob and Tina whether you believe that this document is is committing us to a full removal of SROs no later than January twenty twenty-two, and if that's what we'll be working towards, or if we think that there's still wiggle room there.
Okay, Kitty?
Yeah, I just had a question, because it talks about the target date, would it be possible to do that, I mean, could it happen sooner than that?
It's already happening.
Yeah, no, I know, but I'm just saying, we, it doesn't have to be that late, it could happen sooner, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Donna?
Yeah, I, due to Tom's hospitalization, I wasn't able in the original conversation to be here, so I had a few things to say, I'll start off by saying that if the Board of Education all agreed on everything all the time, then we'd only need one of us, in general, most of us agree on everything most of the time, and I know that from many community conversations and emails, that other voices in our community have not been fully heard, there's many positive parts to this resolution, yes, we need to investigate and address any disproportionate discipline matters as it relates to those kiddos of color, we still, though, must fully address illegal actions, be it sexual assault, physical abuse, harm to self or others, as well as theft and property damage, keep in mind that many such matters have been referred to law enforcement by our staff, three out of four matters are referred by staff, there are many that believe we can address such concerns by involving or by by being involved with the choice of SROs, in fact, some of our schools have had the opportunity to be on the selection committee for the SROs, and by making suggested changes to SRO programs, there are many, we could work on that, there's many concerns, including from this resolution, are we willing, really willing, to pause and eliminate, pause or eliminate, one A, create a scope and sequence in K-12, are we willing to pause and eliminate, one B, define and implement a common and aligned instructional model and practices, are we willing to pause and eliminate creating a tiered system of school requirements, supports and accountability metrics, are we willing to create a system, pause or eliminate creating a system to monitor and assess academic return on investment for current and future programs, and finally, are we willing to pause and eliminate a system for strategically managing existing partnerships and building new relationships, there's other concerns in this tight economy, spending one point five million dollars, maybe even more, to hire less trained people who have less authority and would, in the end, with a legitimate illegal matter, need to involve law enforcement, there are concerns about not having Boulder's Chief of Police involved in a lot of these discussions, she was left out, there are also concerns, of all those things we're pausing and eliminating and or eliminating, I'll possibly be the only dissenting vote on this resolution, but I do think there are a ton of people in the community that agree with me, and that's just what I've got to say to this, thank you.
Thank you, comments from Stacy, we haven't heard from Stacy?
Donna, thank you, I appreciate hearing your point of view, always, and you're right, if we all agreed all the time, there would only need to be one board member, so I think that point is well taken, I don't necessarily oppose getting rid of SROs altogether, however, I do feel pretty strongly about that January date, we're going to need time to figure out how whatever plan we come up with is in line with the Claire Davis Act, which we still have to adhere to, we have to make sure that our campus safety officers know their new responsibilities, and and we're in the middle of a pandemic, and I don't feel comfortable putting all of this on our principals and schools right now to have this, to have the decision made today, so I feel really comfortable with the dates as they are.
Okay, other comments, Kathy?
I'm just going to repeat what I've said before, which is, the reason I support this resolution is because it's asking us to look at our discipline policies as a whole, I'm convinced that if all we did was address SROs, we'd continue to have disproportionality and issues without looking at it, so I think it's a small piece of looking at our overall discipline, and I thank Kathleen and Rob for doing the heavy lift on getting us started down that road, and so that's why I'm supporting it, because I don't think that a singular focus on SROs is going to serve the students or the community well.
I I agree, sorry, I meant to say that too, that the holistic nature of the resolution matters, thanks Kathy.
Kitty, did you have your hand up?
Well, I just wanted to clarify that I don't see anything in here that talks about eliminating any of the strategic initiatives, and Donna, I don't know if that's what you meant, I mean, I got the pause part, but I don't see anywhere anywhere that this is talking about eliminating, and thank you, Donna, for sharing your opinions, I'm glad you did.
If you look, it says it specifically eliminate or pause.
It's actually pause or limit investment, so we do know that this is going to cost us money, and that it will have impacts in this budget cycle on other initiatives, and that's that's just a choice that we're making, and that's fine, but you're, but it's not eliminate, Donna, it's to limit investment.
Well, yeah, eliminate or pause investment.
No, it reads to slow down or pause and limit investment, is how I'm reading it, is there
Limit, limit investment, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't have something else written in that maybe I didn't catch, so, other comments? Yeah, Lisa?
I'm not sure if you and Rob are still going to talk, but I just asked a question of each of you, and I didn't know if you were going to respond.
Oh, yes, sorry, I wanted to, yeah, so I think your question was about whether this is drop dead, all SROs will be gone by January twenty twenty-two, is that the question?
Whether whether you believe this document is committing us to a full removal of SROs no later than January twenty twenty-one.
I think it's, I think it's committing us to have a full plan, and hopefully to get rid of all of them, but you're right, the with the target date, and I personally support a little bit of wiggle room in that date because of the pandemic and because the way things are going right now, that's my personal preference, but as a board, we can definitely choose a firmer date that simply says all SROs must be gone by January twenty twenty-two.
I wouldn't support a motion like that.
Rob, do you want to jump in here?
Yes, so, board members, this gives gives, the resolution, I'm sorry about that, the resolution as it stands gives pretty clear direction, right, I think that to the extent that it tells us on a path that's that's more holistic, that that talks about discipline, that talks about resources, and talks about interactions with law enforcement, that change the way that we do business today, right, I think that that's incredibly clear, to the extent that what this tells me, right, in reading this, is that the goal is by January twenty twenty-two, not only will I have brought together a comprehensive plan, have bought together the 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 budget request, and finding the dollars for the additional resources that would then provide schools the resource and and the expertise in their building to respond to things that currently, right now, potentially, school resource officers are responding to, that would that could, and in some instances has led to disproportionate arrests, so on and so forth, right, I will I will say this, we will continue to have to have a relationship with law enforcement, we will continue to have to call law enforcement, like like, so, you know, if it's if it's semantics, whether it's in it, like, we're going to have to have an agreement, and there will be police in our schools in in certain instances, you know, by giving us time, what you allow us to do is sit down with our law enforcement agencies and think through, what is the best way to go about doing this, what are the what are the agreements that we'd want to make, how do we ensure that if we don't have our own school resource officers in buildings, when police officers respond to our school, we know what to, they know what to expect from us, we know what to expect from them, they know their role, we that we know what they're going to do and not going to do, to the extent that we're able to work those things out, right, so the idea that that, but we're going to have to do that six times, right, like, so it's it's like six times the work in working through this, that maybe some of the other entities where they have one agency that they're dealing with, now, I will say that we've had very good positive first conversations with our law enforcement partners, and and that the the to the extent that that we are going to be able to, I feel very positive about being able to work through through those agreements with those agencies, and in addition to our district attorney, who is also very committed to restorative justice, who's committed to looking at diversion programs, to keep keep our students who are making mistakes out of the court system, like, we have shared interests there, and we're excited to work together on this, right, I think that, so in any event, that's what I gather from from what this is as as written, and we'll bring together a plan forward that will look to that, right, and it won't be December thirty-first where you're hearing me say, oh, we're just keeping them, like, that's not going to happen, this gives me clear direction, ultimately, as you all are my bosses, right, you evaluate me, you're going to evaluate my performance on being able to execute on this as well, I think the resolution gives me clarity, and and our staff clarity in how we need to move and proceed forward.
Donna, and then Kathy?
And thanks, Rob, for that, because I do think we will have to call law enforcement at times, I know that a colleague of mine and and myself, we both had thefts, my wallet was stolen once, my colleague had her tires slit, we've had knife fights in the school, I know that law enforcement is going to have to be involved, what concerns me in all of this and all of this processing is that that three out of four kiddos are referred by staff, and and that's where the officers and and the law enforcement gets called in to our system, because a staff initiates it, and and do do some staff initiate one color over another, I don't know, I think we have to dig deep and find out those answers to those questions within our our own staff, when we find out that our staff is referring disproportionately, do we get rid of the staff, so I I have some concerns, and I'll stop there.
And I'll say in response, Donna, in all fairness, for our schools, just just so our community and the board understands, and again, this is the third big district I've worked in, we are very lean in school administration, right, we, you know, especially at some of our schools, it's the principal and that's it, right, for a lot of our elementary schools, right, like, so, it's not like schools had, hey, should I call this this de-escalation restorative justice expert, or the police officer, and they said, ah, I'll just call the police, like, they didn't have the resources or the training or the expertise, right, to make those choices and decisions, so as we think about this plan, and we think about how we can improve this, you know, certainly, we're going to want to work, you know, with with the groups as outlined in this resolution, we're going to want to work with our schools, and we're want to get, we're just going to want to think about how do you redesign school safety in a way, right, that, you know, again, there are going to be times when things happen where law enforcement has to be called, and you want to want to know what that looks like, and making sure that we're we are setting our kids up for success and and doing all those things, right, but but there's a majority of the things that are happening where there, if if we have the right resource and training, that they may not rise to the level of law enforcement, but if you have nobody to call to, and you don't know what's happening, and you don't have the experience in how to respond, and you have a school resource officer, like, like, to the extent that they are the resource that 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 the limited resources that schools have had to had to call in contact, I just think that it's a really a redesign and and an opportunity for us.
I just don't want to commit us to say that by that date, we will never have SROs in the school, because I think that's not realistic, we're going to have police, I don't know what we're going to call them, but what if we call them school resource officers, but they have a newly defined role, and they're not, I just think we can't say that, because we know we're going to have police in the schools when we need them, so what if we call them SROs, maybe we just rename them, and then have we really accomplished what we need to accomplish, probably not, so I don't want to get hung up on the title and what we label things, that's why I'm excited about the holistic way of looking at this, and and the other thing I'll say is that I know that there's anecdotal stories about what the SROs have done that have been disproportionate to our youth, but I know what we don't hear are all the things that they were able to stop, because you can't account for things that didn't happen, and so what I hear when I talk to communities is that there were lots of times where SROs engaged with youth and kept bad things from happening, and we don't have any way to account for that either, so I I'm just uncomfortable with blaming everything on the SROs, and that's why I'm really looking forward to hearing what you have to say, Rob, thank you.
You know, I don't think that we're blaming SROs for everything that happens in our school system around disproportionality, you know, I I was privileged to be able to listen to a lot of the comments that were being made through the Equity Council, I didn't hear anything, I I wasn't privileged to to listen to the DAC hear anything, I, I wasn't privileged to, to listen to the DAC recommendations or the DAC conversations. And I, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit at a quandary now in terms of, uh, one of the recommendations was to get rid of SROs because of the possibilities that could happen and because of the research that these particular committee people have made as it relates to SROs. Uh, and people were looking at the school to prison pipeline and, and all of that. And, uh, uh, so I'm, I'm a little bit kind of like.
Richard, let me just, I don't.
Let me finish my thought, Kathy, you know, because it seems to me that, uh, the recommendations were very clear, uh, from both committees, uh, and the rationales were very clear from both committees. Uh, and now that I'm hearing all of this conversation over again, it's like, well, SROs are the holy grail of safety in our school systems and I don't know whether that's true or not. Uh, we have campus monitors and I heard Rob talk a little bit about cap and monitors and that it does comply with Claire Davis way back when, when he talked about it. So, I'm just trying to figure out where we're going with this. It seems to me like we're leaving all kinds of little doors opening that at the end result, we're going to say, well, you know, the community at large, all those people that are really in favor of SROs came in force and now we're not going to do what we said we were going to do. That's, that's my problem that I'm having with this whole conversation that we're having right now. I'm sorry, Kathy, but.
No, all I just want to do is, we will have police enter the schools. What if we call them SROs? Then we won't have kept your promise. I don't want to be caught in that trap. That's all I'm saying. I don't want the average police officer who has no idea about how to handle adolescent youth to be the one who responds to the issues in the school. I would want somebody who's trained and maybe, I don't know what we'll call them. But God forbid we call them an SRO and then we can't, so that's all I'm saying, Richard. I, I just want to be broad-minded when we talk about this and when we look at it. I don't want to not uphold the community for sure, but we have divergent opinions in the community and Rob has the unenviable job of negotiating all of that and bringing it back to us. And I have the utmost confidence that he and Kathleen and all of us will reach a compromise.
And I hear you, I hear you, Kathy. And, and I guess my, my, my comment too is that, uh, we don't need to have police officers in our schools every single day of the year. We need to have them when they're needed.
We don't, we, well, we don't. We have 10 officers in 52 schools, but at the Boulder Creek, where we have tents set up right now, a, a, a campus monitor can't walk down the path and say, I'm sorry, you can't interact with our students. So, there are some concerns in the community that I have heard and even with talking with people very close to friends of mine that are police officers and friend, people that have said that the police officer has been, our, our chief of police has been left out in many of the conversations. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment, Donna. And I, this, this, this comment in terms of the police officers walking down the path by clear, by Boulder Creek, by Boulder High School, I think it's stretching it, you know, but I appreciate your comment.
I, I was just there yesterday.
Uh, Lisa?
Yeah, so there was a lot there in a row. Richard, I, I appreciate everything you had to say. Thanks, thank you so much there. I wanted to touch on the three out of four staff and I do think that that's incredibly concerning. And I would say it underscores not only our need to get rid of SROs, but brings us back to the need for bias training and DEI work in retraining our staff so that they're not continuously calling the police on our students and particularly on our students of color in greater disproportion. I'm also definitely not concerned about the folks who, who have no place to stay in the middle of a snowstorm and are at risk of dying tonight and last night being the biggest threat to our students.
Okay, I, um, would like to suggest that we take a vote on the language as is, if everyone is okay with that. Um, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Ziz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. So, Rob, um, as you said, you have clear direction and we're looking forward to seeing how we can address this disproportionate, um, discipline practices. And, uh, and also I'll just, I'll make a mention that our staff and teachers, I think, are a very conscientious and committed group of people who don't have any intention of disciplining people in a disproportionate way. And I don't think there's any, um, notion from the board or from anyone in the community that, that, that's intentional and that's not pointing fingers or blaming or being punitive. It's just a, it's a really great opportunity to create a better environment for all of our students and I think we'll all be participants and partners in that effort. Um, all right. So, the last item is, well, let's see, better check. Okay, our next item is 10.1, Retire Board Policy ECAB and ECAB Regulation R. Sorry, Regulation. R stands for Regulation. Kathleen, what have we got?
Uh, this is the vandalism policy and associated regulation that we reviewed at the last meeting. It's being retired or recommended to be retired because it's inconsistent with our proportionate discipline policies.
Kathy?
I move we retire policy ECAB and ECAB dash R.
Okay. Thanks for making a motion because I probably would have gone straight to a vote, depending on where I was at. Um, okay. And again, I think I said this last time, but thanks for addressing it so quickly. All right. Laura, do you want to call the roll?
Do we have a second?
Yeah, Kitty.
Kitty.
Kathy and Kitty.
I'll take the roll. Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Ziz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next item is, um, 12.1, 2020 redistricting of director district boundaries. And this is something we studied at the last meeting. Oh, we're studying it again though. Okay. What, what if we, what do we have new for this conversation?
I thought, last time Glenn just gave us a bunch of options.
Oh, that was information, yeah.
Okay. So, I thought we'd narrowed.
Yeah, this is an ex, it's, yeah, this is an extension of the last work session. So Glenn Segrew is here to present tonight.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thanks, let me get this called up here. Okay. So can everybody see that?
Yes.
Uh, so this is redistricting, this is a follow-on of a last discussion. Um, and just to do a little background and go over that, uh, state law requires us to review the population balance, uh, between Board of Education Director Districts every four years. Uh, if significant discrepancies are found, Director Districts, um, are to be revised to contain substantially the same number of, of persons. Um, a new analysis and redistricting plan are required this year, uh, since the last one was done in 2016. So that makes, uh, this year the, the time for the review. Um, the new redistricting plan will determine the balance of representation of future board members. And this last point is, is the most important, uh, point here, um, that all of this is about representation and that it's equally distributed throughout the district and that representation, um, that communities feel that they're adequately represented for, uh, for themselves. Moving on. So, in order to do this, we obtain housing counts from, uh, parcel records and American Community Survey, which is a census product. Um, we also supplement that with multifamily and rental units, um, and group homes from Setia Boulder and Colorado Department of Health. Uh, we get rates for occupancy and average household size from the State Demography Office. Uh, and those are based off of census data from 2010 and they build off that and then we refresh that, uh, every 10 years with the next census. Uh, so with that, the results, uh, were verified with other sources and determined to be accurate for the purposes of the study. So how, uh, this looks like, uh, in the end is population of BVSD in 2020 is, uh, estimated to be about 240, uh, a little over 240,000. Um, historically, when we look at this, the planning office, uh, we limit the maximum variation between the districts to about 3%. Uh, and that's the criteria we've set to meet that state requirement, uh, to balance the populations. Current analysis shows significant variations between district, districts, uh, and, and it's well outside the 3%. And I can point you to, uh, the attachment B to your packet, which, uh, shows even double-digit, uh, differences between the districts. Um, especially District G, which is our, our highest growing population district, which, uh, reflects Lafayette and Erie for the most part. Um, and a lot of that's single-family, uh, new detached, uh, new structures being built. And also District F, which is primarily Broomfield, um, which has a lot of, uh, larger apartment complexes in the interlocking area. So due to the significant variations between these Director Districts, uh, we, um, we did come up with a redistricting plan, uh, for 2020. So the proposed boundaries, um, the goal in this, uh, the state points us in some directions with, that the new boundaries need to be contiguous, compact and as nearly equal in population as possible. Um, also with this from the state, we need to maintain current board members, uh, within their respective districts. We don't want to move a border and change representation, uh, with the current, uh, current board members. Um, and also from BVSD, we've also historically tried to minimize changes to existing boundaries, uh, if we feel that boundaries are serving our, our purposes for the most part. Um, and then utilize natural and obvious borders where we can and reflect communities of interest, um, in the new boundaries, which usually isn't our municipalities. Um, sometimes we look at high schools and other school feeders as well, uh, and other communities too, uh, that, that we feel are important. So with that, I want to change the map real quick and get one that's a little clearer. Um, and, here, let me get this. Stop share, that's it. Okay. So, this map is the same map, I just, um, want to make it a little clearer. Some of the, the presentation slide ones are a little bit far away and hard to see. Um, so what it looks like for the proposal we're looking at today, which is the staff's proposal, uh, is start, so I should back up a little. The dark lines here, if you can see my hand, the cursor, that represents the existing boundaries established in 2016. Uh, you can see the different shades and color represent what the new boundaries, uh, of the new areas would be. So we can see, uh, where before the boundary between A and C was right here, we're now proposing A to be extended out west here that way. So with that, uh, we're looking at A. One of the, the, um, directions we received from the board in the past was to better distribute students, uh, CU students, uh, which are currently concentrated in A. And we wanted to get them out into some other, um, just, uh, Director Districts as well. So, in accomplishing that, we took Williams Village and, uh, graduate student housing in the north, um, which are on the fringe of the CU influence area and got them in Area C for the case of Williams Village and B for the graduate housing area. Um, when we do that, we need to make up that population, uh, plus A was a little bit low in population relative to other districts. So we added additional lands to A from C in South Boulder and West Boulder and a little bit of the foothills. Uh, and also in E, uh, there's the small but very dense area in Southeast Boulder. Uh, when we do that, E needs to balance its population and gain some more. Uh, an obvious choice is to take more population from E-G, which is our highest population district at the moment under current boundaries. In doing that, we can take a segment out of the Monarch Contenance area, and a lot of this is already in Lewisville, so that's a very natural move, uh, in my mind. Um, in addition, we add, uh, more population to E to get it to where it needs to be, uh, to balance with the others by going above Arapahoe a little bit and taking a little, um, bit out of Superior and adding it to E. This area in Superior is also in the Monarch feeder as well. C also requires some additional balancing. With F also having high population, uh, we can use C to take some of that, uh, mostly in the Superior area, uh, which is also a natural, a natural fit with most of Superior going to C already anyways. Uh, and we can push C into B a little bit as well to get the population that we need. Um, the other really important one is District D, which here we show extends into District G and takes some of that property north of Isabella Road, uh, which turns into Erie Parkway. Most of this is rural land, uh, with a little tiny part of Erie up in this northern, uh, in this corner up here. Um, these lands are currently in Centaurus feeder system. Uh, D does currently already have some Centaurus, but it's mostly, uh, Boulder High and a little bit of Fairview. Uh, so there's a little bit of a divide of community interest there. Uh, however, I think when we looked at the other options of relieving, uh, G, uh, we needed to take, um, municipal land from Lafayette, uh, and, and expand it into, uh, the Lewisville influence area or Broomfield. So this seemed to be the less impacting choice of when doing that. Uh, in addition, to get further balance between the districts, uh, B takes a little bit of, of, of population out of D in North Boulder. So that is the proposal. Um, in closing, uh, the proposed boundaries will maintain the current standard of no more than 3% variation, which, so it meets that standard. Um, it'll better redistribute the concentration of CU students currently residing in District A and push, uh, about 5,000 of those, uh, students or at least the population in those areas to C and B. Uh, and also largely maintain to community of, uh, communities of interest, uh, with the exception of the land north of Isabella Road, uh, that I just discussed. Uh, so with that, um, I'm happy to take any questions or point out anything that you want to point out.
Okay. Uh, Richard, any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, Kathy?
Glenn, can you tell me, I can't tell what the streets are, what you're doing to C. Um, if we could look at the map again?
So, C?
So, C. So you have this, um, little new part that you're adding or taking away from C and giving to A? And I don't know what streets those are here. It looks like, yeah. I'm sorry?
On the south here?
Yeah.
I was, okay, I'm south. I can find it. Let me just look at a different map real quick. On my side, um, you get a little better detail of it.
So it's north of Table Mesa? Okay. It looks like Tina said it's north of Table Mesa and that kind of makes sense because that little curly line looks like maybe it's going up to N-Car.
That's exactly correct. That is Table Mesa.
Okay. So kind of the Bear Creek catchment area now becomes part of A. Is that what, that's kind of what it looks like?
Yes.
Right. And then, well, and then the other piece to the west of Ninth, which is kind of that foothills of Chautauqua, which is the part that everyone thinks is in A, but it isn't, but now would be.
That makes sense. But that was part of mine and it didn't make any sense.
Right.
Okay. Okay, that was my only question. I just wanted to get my bearings on what that street was. Thanks, Glenn.
Okay, uh, Donna, questions?
No.
Okay, uh, Kitty? Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Stacy?
No questions.
Okay, great. Well, this was good. If you, if anyone has any questions, um, please just.
No. Okay, our next item is the 2021 legislative platform. So every year, we create a legislative platform, and we like to introduce it to our new or returning legislative team, our Boulder delegation, or BVSD delegation, which we'll do at the November 30th lunch. Kitty, thanks for pointing that out. So we, we made a couple of, I'm proposing a couple of significant changes. The first piece is that we always ask our legislators to connect with our lobbyists or with our district leadership before they take a position on a bill that concerns PK through 12. So that's important to us. The second piece is that I am proposing that we put in a special statement for this year, which you had the opportunity to read, but in short, it is really asking the legislator to focus on providing us funding and that we will need to have the flexibility to use that funding how we think we need to, to ensure that we're delivering services, keeping our teachers, and especially mitigating gaps in learning that might have be, might be resulting from the pandemic. We're restating, we say this all the time, but we're saying particularly this time, to not do any earmarked funding for programs, assessments, requirements, or grant funding because we are going to have to have a lot of flexibility for how we do that, of how we use our money. And finally, we're adding, and which we don't generally do, a request for more funding from both the federal and state governments to address the expenses that we have that are significant. As you know, we're trying to staff, we're sometimes having to staff for virtual versus someone in, we're having to staff for substitutes. We just have a lot of needs right now, and we would welcome new funding. So those are our biggest points. We removed a lot of things because they were redundant with this general theme of untethered money. So instead of asking for things that might suggest that we are looking for programs or earmarked money, we really wanted to get that language out of there, so to make it clear that we're not looking for earmarked funding. And then we continued with the language around middle levy funding, and I'm just trying to think. And we did put in a piece about the gap between federal funds for special education and the cost of actual funds. This, we do have an interest from some legislators on this, legislators on this, so we reinvented that. And the rest, I think, is just self-explanatory. So what questions do board members have? Oh, and then the other piece is, these are sort of the overarching guidelines. Then bills are introduced through the year, and generally, when a bill is introduced, if it, if it's not clear where it is in our legislative platform, the lobbyists will come back to us and say, okay, are you, do you want to support this? Do you not want to support this? Or, as a board member, you can say to the board, hey, there's a bill coming up, should we support it or not? There were, I don't, maybe there was 100 education bills last year or something?
Pre-pandemic.
Pre-pandemic. We don't take a position on each one, you know, but so you have, as a board member, you can call something out, or the legislators will call something out. We also, they also tend not to connect with us if there's no chance the bill's going to pass, and often the case, they know that, you know, they just say, look, you don't need to take a position on this, it's never going to happen, and they're right basically all the time. I don't think we've ever been surprised in my seven years, so. Okay, that's it. So what questions? So Richard, we'll start with you.
Yeah, and I want to go back, and I'm not sure where it fits in, but I know I mentioned before, this whole consortium or coalition of folks that have been getting together, and they get together the last Friday of each month to continue the conversation around repealing two bills that were passed way back in 2006, which is HB 1009 and HB 1023, which really restricts a lot of our undocumented individuals to getting childcare licenses, for example, even some of our kids that are going through cosmetology that may not be documented. It restricts them in terms of getting certified, et cetera. So I'm wondering where it fits in, and it seems like they're pretty close to getting a couple of sponsors already for that to happen, and I know that through the conversations they've been having is that they want to get resolutions passed through entities like our school district, city councils, county commissioners, et cetera, to support that effort. So where would that fit in?
Yeah, so, I mean, in general, we wait to get the bill language so that we know what we're supporting. So I think when the bill is drafted and is, and it's pretty well drafted, it doesn't need to be final. We take resolutions on bills that aren't final because there are changes made up till the end. Then you would say to the board, we'd like to pass a resolution in support of that, and then our lobbyists would go advocate for that.
Thank you.
And then, Richard, for the organizations, CASB, in case they wait till the bill drops. And then there's a whole process through legislative resolutions and others to take it to them to see if they'd support it.
I'll continue. Can you post it in terms of where that is at? Because I think it's a very critical piece of legislation or repeal legislation, I'm not sure what you call it, but that could happen, and it will benefit a lot of our undocumented immigrants in Colorado.
Do you have any other comments on the platform?
No, I like the platform.
Kathy?
I have a couple of questions. I continue to not like highlighting significant costs associated with legal and administrative services coming from Boulder when we've been the poster child for litigation on special ed. I know that it's a significant cost, but I wouldn't put that in there. I would just, I would stop it with, as mandated by IDEA. And then I, I don't know why we have student privacy in here still. I don't think there's much coming up on it, and I think we could address it as it comes up. So I'm not sure why we continue to have that. On educational programming, I'm wondering if we would take a position that's similar to, I don't know what the final language was that the superintendents landed on, Rob, but if we had language that supported what they wanted to do around testing this year.
Yeah, we can get that.
You can put that in, yeah.
I think that would be helpful.
That makes sense.
I'm wondering, oh, sorry, back to funding, is, do we have, do we have a position on enrollment and what we want them to do with the money for enrollment yet?
Uh, no, that's Bill's.
So will we have something from Bill by the time we want to draft this? I'm so used to seeing him sitting out there.
I know, there's nobody in this room.
Somewhere.
He's right there, look, he's right in the middle.
Hi, Bill. Are we going to have some language about what to do around enrollment that's consistent with what CFOs want?
It's in that special statement, isn't it?
It does, it doesn't specify a, an enrollment plan.
It just says maintain, maintain funding regardless of enrollment. Is that kind of where the CFOs landed? Is that broad enough?
Yeah, the, all my colleagues are pretty much on the same page that do the count, run the count, and then take the amount that was appropriated and distribute that on a per pupil basis at a higher per pupil amount than what was built in the budget. Because some districts have grown, some districts have declined, and it doesn't make a lot of sense to go through and do a separate count. It's a pretty laborious process to create a count and audit it and all that, so just sticking with the process is really the place to be.
And then, Bill, I don't understand, we oppose legislation that requires a school district to verify a contractor's prompt payment of subcontractors. That seems pretty specific.
Yeah, that's been in there for quite some time. It's an issue that was pretty Denver-centric, and then tried to be applied to the whole state around requiring a particular timeline for paying subcontractors or something like that.
Do we need it in our platform this year?
We seem to keep keeping it every year.
Yeah, we took out the retainage one, but this one is, I mean, it's a, it's a pretty specific item, but it's, it hasn't gone away. It hasn't been implemented and.
It's no harm, no foul. If you think we should keep it in there, it's fine. I was just, don't under, I haven't understood it all these years, and someday, maybe I Otherwise, Tina, I like the idea of keeping it simple. I really do.
And if I could make just a suggestion, I really like the idea of getting very specific around what Bill suggested and getting that in the platform so we can be very specific when we meet with our, you know, elected officials around what it is we'd want for those dollars to do. I don't think, I think being specific around that, because I think that that just makes a ton of sense, and being able to, to give that to Tanya, Ernestine, and really push that is something we really support, because I think it's fair and I think it's the right thing to do. I think it gets, it keeps the money in K-12, but also doesn't penalize districts that have grown.
So I do have a question if, from what I understand, and we won't see the governor's budget till tomorrow, that he's going to pay back, so we're back to the negative factor that we had before the pandemic, but it's one-time money. So I'm wondering if we don't want to have something in there that talks about looking for longer fixes, because the one-time money, we're going to be grateful for, but I don't know that we can use it to pay salaries or do things that we'd like. So I don't know if we can wordsmith something around that, Tina, too, to be thankful, but at this, you know, to talk about both.
Yeah, or to, or to get flexibility on that one-time money. I don't know if we can ask for that. It's not a best practice, but, I don't know.
I can come up with.
So the budget that he put out on the second doesn't indicate, I mean, if money runs through the School Finance Act, it's not identified as one-time dollars. It would have to be a separate allocation to be sort of identified as a specific pot of one-time money. I mean, this happened in the previous downturn, right, in the Great Recession, that the state is cobbling together whatever it can to fund the School Finance Act. There is some concern that his proposal that he's going to go through on Thursday is maybe a tad optimistic and will get modified by the time it gets through the legislature, for sure. But the way it's currently proposed, there's nothing that says, you know, half of it is one-time dollars. The risk being that depending on what happens in the next 18 months or so, it's not as sustainable funding in the School Finance Act.
Right, so I was just thinking we could come up with a sentence after the finally BVSD supports further flexible funding, to say something about long-term sustainable funding, that we, that's all.
That makes sense.
And let's make sure we don't have, I think we have something like that in there already, which is our overarching statement.
I just keep looking, so if we have something like that, that's fine, I just. But thank you for doing the lion's share of working on this.
Donna, any comments?
No, I don't have any, thanks. All my questions have been answered.
Okay, Kitty?
Yes. I would really like to see something saying that we would like the state legislature to balance the budget on somebody else's back. The state owes public education $9.3 billion, and they've been taking it out of education ever since the last recession, and I would really like to see them find another place to take it out of. I don't think our children should be having to pay the price of the state not, you know, having enough money to fund everything.
I feel like I deleted that, and, well, I think we had that in there.
Maybe I missed it.
No, it's, well, we've been going, I think in a similar way, we used to speak about the restoration of the state funding levels under Amendment 23.
But that's not the same as saying, take your negative factor and put it in somebody else's budget.
Right. All right, well, let's see if we can wordsmith that into here. Maybe, maybe we'll see how Bill can do that best. Do you have anything else?
No, that was just, it just really bothers me that, that public education is the one that has to pay all the time. They should take it from somewhere else.
Oh, agreed. And that's, that's like really different language, which is nice, it'll stand out. Okay, Lisa, any comments?
No, but I appreciate what Kitty just added.
Stacy, any comments?
Yeah, I have a question. Since this is the first time that I've been through the whole CASB resolutions and now how that kind of aligns or doesn't align with these, with our platform, one thing just came to my mind in light of our other conversation, that BVSD sponsored at the CASB Resolution Delegate Assembly to repeal the Claire Davis Act. And so I wondered, should that be aligned with our legislative platform, if it's something that we brought to CASB?
It's in there, but it's not that, it doesn't say Claire Davis.
Yeah, it is here.
It's 4.2.
Which one?
4.2.
The new 4.2. So Stacy, do you see it's a 4.2?
Yeah, I see it. It wasn't named.
We don't refer to Claire Davis specifically, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a reason?
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know, I mean, I would assume that if we're going to sponsor something at the CASB, for CASB resolution, we would want it in our own.
Yeah.
Is there a reason we don't have Claire Davis written in here?
These are tough questions tonight. Is there a reason we don't have Claire Davis?
Stacy has a point. We, we sponsored the one, and it passed at CASB.
We can put it in. I think we went with something broader, probably in case it was called something else. So we probably went broader. This was a few years back. We've kept it in ever since, but any strong thoughts?
And I think this is broader because we ask about funding and things, and I don't think the CASB resolution addressed funding, as I remember it, but.
The CASB one, it. It did, it said to repeal it unless they can pay for added security measures. I'm pretty sure, Stacy, do you remember that? That's what I think it said.
I, I thought it just said repeal, and I thought it was very, just very succinct that to repeal the Claire Davis Act.
Wait, it should be in the email.
And it passed pretty overwhelmingly.
Anything else? Anyone have anything else come to mind? So we will look at this one more time and try to make some more changes. And that will come to, at our next meeting, and then we'll have that available for our legislators prior to when we meet with them. So, and also the other thing is, the legislative platform is an evolving document, so, you know, we can change it as our priorities change, so we don't have to feel like this is something that's forever. All right, and any other questions about interacting with lobbyists and stuff like that? We have our legislative liaison, Kathy, and Kitty, are you still?
Not really.
Not really. I mean, we didn't do anything last year because of the pandemic mostly, so. And then Rob, of course, works directly with Ernestine and Tanya, and now Taylor, I think, is the third lobbyist. All right. Last one, last item we have is, I'm sorry, any other questions before we move on? And I'm, I'm not looking at the Zoom panel here, so say something. Okay, agenda setting, 12.3. Any items for agenda setting? I think we're going to be having a prioritization. I think we're going to be having a prioritization meeting at some point. Right, Rob?
I would say it's, did we have that set for December?
December 1st.
December 1st. All right. So that's a really great opportunity to think about what we're going to focus on beside the pandemic and how we get kids back at school. So, there we go. All right, any other comments? Well, this isn't a comment section. Any other agenda items? All right. Well, with that, we can adjourn the meeting.